Morning. In accordance with six hundred and forty-five and fifty-three, the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment in the City of Toronto is called to order. My name's Larry Clay, and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Dino Lombardi, Yim Chan, and Peter Reed. Our Deputy Secretary Treasurer today is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge that land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bagh, the Chipua, and the Hodon Osoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by trees thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid, an in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submission in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. For those participating virtually, when your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in-person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must first fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda, and where an application is contested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation. When an application is uncontested, the Committee may not require a presentation. The Committee may ask questions and/or take matter into Committee for a decision. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the Committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and Committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first and then those participating through WebEx. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum five minutes to address the Committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into Committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, any minutes need to be adopted?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No minutes for adoption today.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest from panel or staff in this morning's session? See none? Any files to be closed this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. See none.
All right. Any deferral requests this morning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there is one deferral request for item number two, four-four-two Harvey Avenue, file number A zero-six-one-eight slash twenty-five T E Y. We'll get to this deferral. However, I do want to go through one particular comment about the Canada Post labor disruption. So, recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act modernize public notice requirements, enable municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance and consent applications. Many municipalities in the Greater Toronto area and beyond have chosen to provide alternative forms of notice as an interim measure during the Canada Post labor disruption. The city has gone beyond what the regulations require. Some of the things we have done include posting on the City of Toronto website, posting links to the agenda and application information on our web pages, posting on City Planning social media channels, posting public hearing signs on the subject site, as well as publishing the agenda list in the Toronto Star. Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online for item number two. You can introduce the item, and then we can get through to the deferral request.
Thank you. Item number two is four-four-two Harvey Avenue. This is an application to construct a new three-story fourplex dwelling with a front integral garage, front, second and third-story balconies, a rear ground floor, second-story, third-story balconies with connecting exterior stairs and platform landings, as well as a rear basement walkout. Also, to construct a new two-story ancillary building containing one garden suite in the rear yard with a second-story balcony, the existing one-story detached dwelling and the detached garage in the rear yard will be demolished, and there'll be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. Do we have the agent? Oh, sorry, I have to read the stuff in the record. Pardon me. Hang on a second. Committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised public notice received October twenty-eighth, and a revised zoning notice for the garden suite received October twenty-eighth. Two photographs of subject property, covering letter from the agent. We have email correspondence from Transportation Review. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry. Four form letters in support from owners occupants of four-twenty-four, four-thirty Harvey Avenue, twenty-four thirty-two Chadley Road. There's opposition from four-forty Harvey and four-four-two Harvey. We have the agent?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm also going to ask the presenter, under very late materials, the deferral covering letter, and the agent will speak to this letter.
Okay. Good morning, sir. Ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Committee members. My name is Sabal Metnup from QBS Architects. I am the agent for this application. So, we are here before you to request the deferral as we have received a notice from the city on November thirteen mentioning that our application will be automatically deferred because the sign has been removed for two consecutive days without our notice, basically. And a member of the public contacted the city to inform them that the sign was removed. Hence, it's an automatic deferral because of the legislation by laws. We don't know who removed the sign. We found it two days later that was put on the side of the property. So, we are here before you to request for the deferral. At the same time, we did not know any of the neighbors had objected because our client went door-to-door to distribute the package on November four to inform the neighbors. We had discussions also with them. And that deferral will give us the opportunity to speak with both neighbors, which we had requested. We had met with the neighbor on the north, you might say, yesterday, and we reached an agreement with them.
All right, ma'am. I'm just gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna cut you off there. I think we understand the circumstance. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks.
Sabrina, is there anyone there speaking on this one?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have one opposition from one-five-four-seven Blood Street West, but we were not able to reach out to them. And we have one person from four-forty Harvey Avenue. The person is in interest, and he's online.
All right. This is Lucy. Lucy, are you there?
Yeah, hello?
Hi there.
Hi.
If I could have your name and address, please, ma'am?
Yeah, Lucia Ruda, four-four-zero Harvey Avenue.
All right, ma'am. We're not going to be dealing with the application today. The applicant has requested a deferral. All I really want from you this morning is, are you supportive of the deferral request?
So, just to clarify, deferral to what date? Or we're just postponing to a later date, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This has been rescheduled for our December tenth hearing.
Did you hear that, ma'am? December tenth?
Yeah. So, if that's the case, I support the December the tenth to reschedule.
Thank you. And I think you might have heard the agent indicate that they have every intention of speaking with you and others.
Yeah, and for...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else? That's it? Okay. All right, we're in Committee. I think, Peter?
Yeah, Chair. I think I'll move deferral of the application to allow for proper signage.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Chen, all in favor. You have your deferral. Thank you very much. All right, we move back to item number one. This is one-fifty and one-fifty-two Beverly Street. This is an application to alter the existing three-story mixed-use building by converting the existing office space into medical office space with accessory uses. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, eighteen photographs of the subject property. We have presentation materials from the agent. There's email correspondence from Heritage Planning, and one form letter in support from one-fifty Beverly. Do we have the agent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online, and no registered speaker for this item.
Okay. Good morning, sir.
Hello. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee members. My name is Thomas Dubowski. I'm the agent and planning consultant for the owners of Unit One at one-fifty and one-fifty-two Beverly Street.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just hang on a second. I know you did some presentation materials. We've read them. Panel, does anyone need a presentation on this one? Seems fairly straightforward. Yeah, we can go to questions. Sir, we don't need a presentation this morning. It's fairly straightforward, but we do have a question. Okay, Dino?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. The Unit One that currently exists, what's it being used for? And follow-up question, what are the accessory uses that are anticipated?
Certainly. So, Unit One is located below grade along Beverly Street. It's currently an office unit, but it is currently vacant. So, the interest is to redevelop this unit only through internal modifications to facilitate a medical office use. With respect to the medical office use, what is being sought would be permissions to facilitate a medical clinic as well as accessory uses. So, these accessory functions, they would be elements like diagnostic services, like X-ray capabilities or an in-clinic prescription dispensing component, essentially elements that would ensure that this medical office component can appropriately function and respond to future patient needs.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, sir. Thank you very much. We're going to take this into Committee. Does anyone want to take this one on? Dino? Motion by Mr. Lombardi to approve. I have a second there. Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have your approval, sir. Thank you very much. We move on to item number three, sixteen Leander Court. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front one-story addition, new attached garage containing one parking spot, and a rear first-story deck with stairs. The existing integral below-grade garage will be converted into a storage room, and the existing exterior side stairs will be demolished. Committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have eight photographs of trees on the subject property, a TRCA permit, a tree plan for the property. We have email correspondence from Transportation Review and from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. There are staff reports from Urban Forestry. We have the agent with us online.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online, and no registered speaker for this item.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Lopez.
Good morning. My name is Bruno Loaf from MXL Engineering Associates, located at sixteen forty-nine St. Clair Avenue West, and I'm the agent for this application.
Great. Sir, again, it seems like a fairly straightforward application. You're just removing the reverse slope driveway, putting a grade-level garage in and converting some storage space, right?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair. The client had a couple of issues in the past with water. We know what's happening with his reverse slope driveways, right? So, whenever there is a rainstorm, bad things happen. On the other hand, as well, there is a tree, and there is a retaining wall there that has become faulty. So, we came up with the solution that we've done this already, multiple projects, which is doing the infill and move the garage to the upstairs. So, most of these variances are with the garage. The deck is just a modest deck, so they can enjoy, you know, having their barbecues at the back. This family has been there for twenty-six years, get along with the neighbors. No objection from anybody. Everybody's on board, so very straightforward.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel, any questions?
No, thanks.
No questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask the presenter, under very late materials. There is a letter from TRCA, and there is no objection.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually the permit.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take it into Committee. Yim? No, they've got their permit. Well, RNFP number one.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Motion by Ms. Chen to...
It remains a natural...
It is RNFP, yeah.
Could I also make a suggestion that we tie it to the site plan? Just to, just so the, the front, yeah, is limited to the garage and not further building on the south side as well. Is that okay? Thanks, Yim.
Okay. All right. Motion by Ms. Chen with those conditions, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you. Move on to item number four. Thirty-six Chester Ave. This is an application to alter the existing three-story townhouse dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition, expanding the existing vacant attic space into a full third story, a rear ground floor deck, and enclosing a portion of the existing front porch with a new basement extension below. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, eight photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, presentation materials from the agent, and the building permit affecting the subject property. We have an advisory report from TTC and several form letters in support from properties around and on Chester Avenue. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online, and no registered speaker.
All right. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Committee members. My name is Andrea Yeatman. I am the architect as well as the homeowner at thirty-six Chester.
All right. Again, panel, fairly straightforward. Then, we need a presentation on this one. It's just basically an attic fill. Dino, are you okay? Yep. Okay, ma'am. We don't need a presentation today just because it's a fairly straightforward application, but we do have a question.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Yeah, it's just a clarification. TDC, of course, Monday, they actually have divided into like conditions. The condition one and three apply to your property. One, one, three, and five, and comments, one and two. The condition one, three, and five, that, do you agree we're going to tie the approval, if we're going to approve it with these conditions?
Yeah. So, I've been speaking with the TTC, and I've applied for a TTC request for review level form.
Okay, so...
Seems unusual. You're not actually increasing your footprint at all. You're just, you're just...
It's the first time I seen that they actually...
Yeah, it's because we're within the sixty-meter range to the Chester subway station. So, we just have to go back and forth with them to show exactly where our property is. If you see in my presentation, a house two doors over that are actually closer to the TTC have recently done a third-floor addition, so I don't, I don't see it being any issue. Yeah, the next page, page three.
Sabrina, so do we still attach the conditions on this regardless?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
Nope, that's, that's great.
All right. Let's go into Committee. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. This is a very good application package. I want to commend the applicant on that. I think there's very good support material. And the variance is being requested are minor. The rear deck is an existing situation, and popping it up, up the third floor has, has limited to no impact on the neighbors. So, I'll move approval of the application subject to TTC condition.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reed to approve. I have a second there. Mr. Lombardi, all in favor. You have your approval, ma'am. Thank you. Move on to item number five, five-fourteen Markham Street. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a partial rear third-story addition. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, one photograph of trees on the neighboring property, and a previous decision number affecting the subject property. Oh, good morning, sir. Welcome. Your name and address, please. Is your microphone on?
I'm Robert Cohen, the husband of the owner of the house and the authorized agent for the application.
Sir, again, fairly straightforward application, but since you came down here, is there anything you'd like to share with the panel?
I had a presentation, but I can share it if you'd like.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Hold on. We do have someone here in person that wishes to speak, right? For five-fourteen Markham Street?
That was me.
Is anyone else here in the audience to speak regarding five-fourteen Markham Street? Okay.
Okay. It's up to you, sir. If you would like to take us through quickly, that'd be great.
I'll go quick. It's, what we're proposing is a modest thirteen-square-meter extension to the third floor of the home. The current top floor is a finished attic space with a slope ceiling, which is, limits its usable area. And we are proposing to raise the sloped western roof plane, allowing the space to function as bedrooms for our young children. The proposal is minor. It does not change the footprint of the home. All the work is above grade and contained within the existing perimeter of the building. Project has no impact on trees, roots, or tree protection zones. It does not alter damage, sorry, drainage, lock coverage, or any gram-related conditions. In terms of neighborhood context, what we're proposing is in line with many third-floor rear additions on Markham Street. The existing roof form at the front of the house on the east side is unchanged, and the addition is invisible. We've spoken to neighbors beside us and to our rear. They have expressed no objections, and no objections, as far as I know, were raised during the notice period. So, we believe the variances requested are minor in scale and support our small-family improvement to an existing home, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, sir. Any questions, panel? Dino?
Hopefully, I have this on. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I noticed there was a previous Committee of Adjustment decision dated September thirteenth, twenty-sixteen, which increased the FSI to one-point-zero-one times the area of the lot and included two conditions of approval. What happened to, to that?
We did that addition, and those permits have been closed for years.
And what is the, the existing FSI currently on the third floor?
The FSI on the third floor alone?
Yeah.
I have that. I just don't have good eyes. It is seven, oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
There's, there's a better reader's point.
So nice of you. Thank you. My goodness, this is my life now. The existing is seventy-nine, and the proposal is to take it to ninety-two.
Right. Okay, so, follow-up question. How can the third, partial third-floor, or story addition add what I think is a hundred-and-twelve-point-nine-four meters square to the dwelling with those numbers you've just mentioned?
You mean in the total?
Yeah.
Oh, that's an error because the detached garage is included on one column and not on the other, which is a mistake.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. I just have one. So, you've got a bit of a flat roof with, it looks like from the elevations, is there a door coming off the new addition on Bex, or are you planning to use as a, as...
No, there, no, there's currently a door. There's currently a door with a sort of a Juliet railing, and the proposed addition does not include a door.
And so, there's no balcony or patio?
It will not be, no.
That's great. All right. Anything else, panel? Thank you very much, sir. Let's go into Committee. Yim?
I can start. I, I know the area very well, and actually, yeah. I think this little alteration is really modest, and it's not, it's only one variance, and no objection from the neighbors. I would support this application to move a motion with, with no conditions, to approve, no conditions.
Okay, motion by Ms. Chen to approve, seconded by Mr. Lombardi, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move on to item number six. Forty-six Ennerdale Road. This is an application to construct a new three-story detached fourplex, including a basement with a walkout patio, a front-covered porch with stairs, and a rear exterior staircase. Also, to construct a new rear two-story detached ancillary building containing a garden suite. There will be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. The existing detached garage will be demolished. Committee has before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, five photographs of the subject property, presentation materials from the agent, planning rationale submitted by the agent. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry, a letter from the councillor suggesting deferral or refusal. We have a twenty-nine signature petition in support from owners occupants on Ennerdale Road, Chadley Road, and Holmesdale Road. We have correspondence and opposition from fifty-four, fifty-one, a second one from fifty-one and thirty-nine Ennerdale Road. We have forty-six signature petition and opposition from owners occupants on Ennerdale Road and Rochdale Road. We have correspondence and opposition from thirty-nine Ennerdale Road. And, good morning, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent here in person, and one registered speaker in opposition online.
All right, then. All right, sir. Name and address, please.
Good morning, sir. My name is Ian Flood. I'm counsel for the applicant. Ninety-nine Yorkville Avenue is my office address, but I've provided my email address to the, to the clerk. Sir, there are a couple of small changes to the application that I might...
The variances?
To the variances themselves.
Okay, let's walk through the public notice, if you would, please. Which ones are they?
Beginning with variance number two. The new dwelling would have a height of eleven-point-three-eight.
Okay.
Variance number five. The rear yard soft landscaping would go to forty-point-three.
Sorry, and what is that in terms of...
I'm sorry, sir. I don't know that right off the, right off the hop here.
We will need that to amend the notice.
Okay.
No, let, let the agent do it.
I, we have, I have an agent also watching, so I'm sure that he'll be able to provide me with information very soon.
All right, sir, you...
There's still a couple more. Yep.
Still got more changes. All right.
Yep. Variance six indicates that the garden suite will be located six-point-five meters. The garden seat will not, the garden suite will now be located seven meters from the residential building.
Okay.
And that same change is reflected in variance ten,
Okay.
where the garden suite will be seven meters from the residential building. For the garden suite? Yes. The garden, the garden suite height is unchanged.
Okay, that's it for the variances?
Yes, sir.
Any changes to the drawings of the site plan or the elevations?
Sir, we have a set of plans that reflect these changes. I, you, I don't believe that they're in front of you, so that's, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, well, hang on a second. Sabrina, what's the protocol in this situation? Can we continue?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The revisions would be dealt with through the actual variances. So, because we don't have plans, then the Committee cannot impose a condition to tie to revise plans because we don't have that before us today.
Okay.
So, we're just referring to the variances that have been revised.
Okay, thank you. All right, sir. We do have, someone wants to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation from you.
Thank you, sir. What is proposed at forty-six Ennerdale is a three-story fourplex and a two-story garden suite, both permitted building types in this RM zone, both expressly contemplated by the city's multiplex and garden suite policy frameworks. This makes an amenity-rich location accessible to more families. The question for the Committee today with respect is whether the specific variances required to accommodate this form of gentile intensification meet the four tests under section forty-five-one of the Planning Act. Our planning consultant, Mr. Chen of the Planning Agency, has provided a detailed analysis in writing, and I will highlight the core elements that, in my submission to you, are determinative. The proposal maintains the general intent and purpose of the official plan because fourplexes and garden suites are now part of the planned evolution of neighborhoods. OPA six forty-nine and OPA five fifty-four deliberately broaden the range of low-rise housing forms, and this application implements those permissions exactly as envisioned. Our client proposes three-bedroom units. I would indicate that the plans do not... I would indicate that the plans do not show three-bedroom units at this time, but it is their model, and in other applications, they consistently are creating three-bedroom units in line with the policies, and that's in the fourplex. There will be a modest two-bedroom garden suite. Both of them are, live within the existing low-rise built form envelope. None of them require the removal of protected trees, and they're in walking distance of Dufferin and the, we're all waiting for it, Eglington corridor. The OP direction is clear. Neighborhoods are stable but not static. This proposal reinforces that direction while respecting the physical character of the area. The general intent and purpose of the zoning is maintained. We would submit to you that the variances here are a fine tuning and not a change in use, form, or scale behind what the zoning anticipates. For the fourplex, the front yard setback continues the rhythm of the street and aligns with the adjacent north property. The height increase of 0.38 meters is, would probably be imperceptible, and it's mitigated by dormer and roof design imperceptible from the street. The reduced south yard is paired with a fully compliant north side yard, providing maintenance access, fire safety, and privacy. And soft landscaping in the front yard increases significantly over the existing conditions and represents an improvement to street character. Now, for the garden suite, the two-story garden suites are now broadly permitted through the garden suite monitoring program. The proposed height of 6.3 meters fits within what was adopted by council. The separation from the main building is now seven meters, and although the soft landscaping is below the 50%, our calculations are that the actual stormwater permeable surfaces, once we take permeable surfaces into account, exceeds 59% of the rear yard, meeting at least the objective of the zoning. Sir, this form fits the lot, and the adjustments in our submission are technical. We would submit to the committee that these are minor in impact. There's no adverse shadowing on the adjacent properties, no overlook from the second-story windows at the garden suite, no removal of trees or encroachment to the TPZs, significant improvement in front yard soft landscaping, if you've seen the site, either in person or over Google, and no functional conflicts between the fourplex and the garden suite. Importantly, five units on this lot is permitted, and the variance is not for the number of units but for the precise placement and refinement of permitted buildings. There is no planning harm identified by staff or by any city division. We would submit to you that the development is desirable for the appropriate use of the land. This application delivers exactly what the city is trying to produce: accessible, grade-related unit in the basement, and so that's universal accessibility for the basement unit, family-sized rental units, a discreet backyard garden suite, improved permeable surface conditions, transit supportive density, and renewal of aging housing stock in the Caledonia Fairbank area where the city's data shows a high level of unsuitable and overcrowded housing. This is a missing middle housing in the neighborhood that needs it executed in a compact and efficient form. Committee members, your task is not to reconsider council's policy decisions about multiplexes and garden suites. Your task today is to determine whether the specific variance is required to implement those permissions meet the Planning Act tests. The proposal maintains all those tests. I will reserve any comments from the public in the rebuttal that I may have, and thank you for your time and attention.
Great, thank you very much, sir. I think we'll hold questions until we hear from the speaker.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we have speakers in person for this item. Maybe we can hear from them.
Mr. Fleck, I wonder if I could ask you just to move off? Whoever, is someone here wanting to speak? Do you want to come up in turn?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
My name's Gabriel Altid. I live at 35 Enderdale Road. We submitted a letter as well as a petition. The letter was not necessarily registered in your accounting earlier. It was submitted well before the deadline, but because it was sent with the same email, whoever received it by the city didn't put it there, but it should be there. So I fully understand that, you know, the city wants to have the greater density, but we do have some concerns. The height of the building is over. That is not a gray issue. It's black or white. So we're a little bit concerned about that. I don't know that it will be imperceptible. I think that that's a matter of subjective opinion. My other concerns primarily are, I don't see that there's any allowance for parking, and looking at the bylaws for the zoning that we have, there's supposed to be 1.8 parking spaces per unit, and so we are looking at five units. Currently, there is some street parking. A lot of the houses in the neighborhood have their own driveways, and by putting in a garden suite, you know, where the driveway and maybe garage would go, it negates that ability. So that now puts pressure on the area for parking, especially with five units. Currently, there is no, there are no permits required for street parking for the people who live in the area, but I believe that if we have, say, you know, 1.8 parking spaces for every unit, all of a sudden, there's going to be a shortage of parking, and now the people who live there are going to have to start paying for permits, which is, you know, an ongoing, you know, financial expense. Furthermore, the concern with putting in a garden unit is it does take up more space, and it does affect the amount of rainwater overflow, and I know that that is a concern. And I understand that there has been a, you know, a presentation of softscaping, but, you know, if you were to look at the satellite image of our neighborhood, one of the things that makes the neighborhood quite nice is there are some large trees in the area, including on the property that I live. There is basically no allowance for that, and while, you know, the proposal, you know, sees everything appropriately, I know that any requirement of a, you know, reasonable, you know, tree of a mature size that's typically, you know, inspired to on many of the city properties, I just don't see the space in that. And this is coming from someone who, you know, works in the landscaping industry. So I don't think that is covered adequately in terms of biomass. If there was, you know, green roofs or something on these buildings, then perhaps that could offset it a little bit, but I don't see anything proposed in that regard. And I'm not quite sure about the variance about the facing of the unit. So I believe that all units have to face the street. Obviously, the garden suite is facing the back of a building. That's more of a technical issue. I don't know if it's facing the side, which is currently next to it. And, yeah, the local neighborhood has had a history of flooding in basements, and there's been some sort of, not currently, but ongoing improvement of the infrastructure for drainage. And part of the reason for that is that there are multiple hills coming down from the south, the north, the west, and further, a little further over on Rochdale to the east. So there's this kind of, you know, drainage area, and this property is on the border of that. Adding to any, you know, drainage, you know, input is going to negatively affect that. You know, there are people who are around the, I'm getting the name of the park, the George something Park, just in the neighborhood down near Rochdale. There's many people that get flooding in their basements, and I know that because we have a dog. We walk in the neighborhood, we talk to people, we get a big rainstorm, and people are like, oh, my God, yeah, we, you know, we can't rent a fan, or we can't rent a thing because everybody's doing this. So while I understand that we want some development, I think that there is numerous concerns here that will be imposed if...
They're just going to ask you to wrap up, if you would?
Done, thank you.
You're done? All right. Thank you. Panel, any questions of the speaker?
No.
Nope. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did you want to speak?
Thank you. Also, was it noted, I believe...
Here, come on up and sit near the microphone and maybe give your name and address.
Sure. My name is Emily Vabares. I'm at 35 Enderdale Road, across the street from 46.
Are you in the same address as this individual?
I am, yes.
Sabrina, are we okay with this? Okay?
Did you receive, there was, Jan, Jenny, I believe, said there was a late submission notice, I think three. Two were misunderstanding on her end, and then there was...
Through you, Mr. Chair. If they're very late opposition, they, we do have them. However, the members have not had the opportunity to review them. So if you're going to speak on behalf of these individuals and raise their concerns, then you can.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, I know two of the three were actually submitted before the deadline. She just made a misunderstanding of them.
Okay, ma'am, you've got five minutes, if you want to go ahead now?
Thank you. So I'm here strongly opposing the variance submitted for 46 Enderdale Road. A fourplex with an additional duplex on such a tiny dwelling and lot goes against the current zoning laws. I thought perhaps it doesn't for the area, but it does go completely out of scale for the current neighborhood, which generally houses single-family homes. This will impact our community and our streetscape negatively by altering an established family nature of the community and undermining the scale and cohesion that makes this area so desirable and livable. Sunlight will be blocked. Green space will be taken away. Parking will become a major concern, since none is proposed, as far as I know, for this site, and thus congestion will be greatly increased within the community. Our impact for living in a peaceful community will be compromised. I currently personally, and my neighbors as well, can see the sunset from my window, and this dwelling will block that, and that takes away a very peaceful moment I have at the end of my day in my home, part of what I love about living in this neighborhood. As a side note, I don't know if this is a note or not for you guys. There are quite a few signed petition, or people who sign the petition on the developer's side that go outside the neighborhood bounds of 200 meters as well. So we did our petition within the limits, and the exact neighbors in the area who strongly oppose this as well. And our city councillor as well has given us her support. I think you have a letter from her. So I strongly urge the committee to deny these requested variances. I really appreciate your time and your consideration on this very impactful and important matter for our neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much, ma'am.
And I did have, there was one, sorry, she said about a late submission, who couldn't be here. I don't know if you want me to read what she submitted?
But if you could just let us know the address.
Sure, sure. What is her address? Oh, she made it. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Questions? Hang on a sec.
Yes, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. To the deputant, you mentioned at the start of your deputation, you said a fourplex plus a duplex on this. My understanding, this is a fourplex and a garden suite, which is a total of five units.
I believe if I can look at the signage they posted, it said fourplex and duplex. Am I wrong? I can look at it on my phone.
That's not what we have before us. What we have before us is a proposal for a garden suite, which would be one unit, as opposed to duplex, which is typically considered to be two units.
I don't know. I have to look at mine.
But we'll ask the agent to clarify when the agent comes back. It's okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
And one other question. You mentioned at the end that the committee of adjustment has received a letter from the local councillor recommending refusal. I read the letter. I believe the suggestion or recommendation is deferral.
Okay, I thought it said deferral or refusal. Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a late, hi there. You just came in. Did you want to speak, ma'am? Or are you just observing?
I'm going to say, I'm on the same property as assembly, or I'm in that neighborhood, but I just wanted to, I provided a letter.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The letter is very late, so the members have not had an opportunity to review. So if you're here, you might as well come and sit and speak to the members.
Okay, if you want to just sit there and, in this chair here where the microphone is.
Okay.
And if you could just give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
It's Carolyn Branton at 32 Enderdale Road.
Okay. And you have five minutes to tell us whatever you'd like.
Okay. I just...
Is the microphone on, or are you maybe a little closer to it?
So just, just kind of to, in support of the other points that have been made in the letters that were submitted on time, regarding that property and other properties, the, the kind of, the escape of the neighborhood, the green space is a big concern for me and other people in the neighborhood. So many, a number of new properties have been purchased by developers who build, they're building like buildings that kind of block the sun and create issues for light and gardens and green and trees, and so it's, as things get kind of, as properties get transformed, you lose a lot of the green space in the neighborhood. So that's, that's a big concern for me and other people in my neighborhood. So the height, the buildings are very, kind of very large footprint, so they'll buy a house where there's a bungalow and the whole yard and green space is taken up by the house, the dwelling, whether it's multi or single-family, and a lot of them are luxury kind of housing. So I'm concerned about, I guess, affordability, like what kind of building it'll be. If it'll be affordable housing or what sort of development it's going to be. I just, I'm just concerned about that in our neighborhood and concerning this property as well, is that people don't under, like, there's a kind of equality of neighborhood and green space that we want to, I would really like to support for now and go into the future because if we lose our green space, you don't kind of get it back. So that's it.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
Sorry, can you just state your first and last name and the address that you reside at?
Carolyn Branton at 32 Enderdale Road.
Thank you. Panel, any questions? Yes, Dino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the deputant, you mentioned concern about height. Are you aware that council recently adopted through various revisions and iterations that if a garden suite is 7.5 meters from the main home, it can reach a height of 6.3 meters? And I don't know, you were late when you came in. I don't know if you're aware that there have been some changes made by the applicant here today about specifically variance number six and variance number 10. So the proposed height, well, the separation distance now is seven meters as opposed to 6.5. So I'm not, I'm not sure you're aware that if it was 7.5 meters away from the main home, it could be, as of right, 6.3 meters.
They reduced the building footprint or the...
No, the separation distance from the main home.
It increased.
That's right, they increased, yes.
Of the back building?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
I didn't think you were. That's why I'm just pointing it out to you.
Yeah. So it's just, yeah, I was not aware of that.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for coming down. All right, that's our speakers. Oh, we have one more? Okay, come on up, sir. Have a seat and name an address, please.
My name is Joe Carnaro. I live at 44 Enderdale Road.
All right, sir. You're right next door?
Yeah, I'm his neighbor on the south side.
All right, sir. You have five minutes.
Okay, my concern is just the backyard dwelling, the two-story building he's putting in the backyard. The backyards in that area have no laneway, so it will look like, if I go in my backyard, I'll have just a 20-foot wall in my backyard to look at. Nothing, I can't see the neighbors on my north side or the street or anything. So it'll be one dark space. That whole area is like a ravine area. That whole area is like a ravine area. To my south side, I have a steep hill. Two houses down, two houses to the south. It's a nice neighborhood. Now, the backyard dwellings, when they change everything.
Okay. Um, just to be clear, um, you said there's no laneway. Uh, there doesn't, there doesn't have to be in this instance. There, the city council is now permitting garden suites. So that means it's like a laneway suite, but it doesn't have a lane.
Well, I'll have a twenty-foot wall in my backyard to look at.
That's a fair point, I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Soon as I get, come from work, I go to the backyard, open a sliding door and there's a twenty-foot wall on, to my right side. I, I didn't buy the house, well, I didn't make the house in eighty-seven to live in a confined space there.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, sir. Any questions, panel? Is that it, sir?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Uh, any, any questions? No?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much for coming down, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair, now we can hear, uh, registered, registered speaker which is online.
Okay, we have one more speaker?
Yeah.
All right. Good morning.
Uh, good morning, uh, community and, uh, all present. Um, I live, my name is Dina Souza, thirty-nine Enderdale Road, Toronto, Ontario. Uh, most of my concerns have already been opinionated. But one of my main concerns, because I do live across the street, is the, the parking, the parking congestion. I mean, Enderdale already has such parking storage, uh, shortage, sorry, shortage of parking. And, and as this plan, plan is proposed, I do not see any allowed it's, uh, parking spaces for these cars in the driveway, so they will be taking on-street parking. And this is going to cause a lot of congestion in our, on our neighborhood. I am happy to see that there will be family units. As I work for nonprofit, I am very concerned that we do need more family units in the city of Toronto instead of single units. So thank you, sir.
All right ma'am, thank you very much. Panel, any questions to speaker? See none? Uh, that's our last speaker. Okay, all right, sir, you can come on back up. Okay, uh, you've heard some concerns, I wonder if you could take some time to address them.
Sir, thank you very much. Uh, and thank you to those who expressed their, their concerns with the application, I'm happy to do so. Before I do that, uh, I did receive the square meters of the, of the altered variance and that's fifty point nine six square meters for variance five.
Okay, great, thank you.
To group the, um, I first, I'll, I'll just group a couple of the common objections. Uh, and the first grouping will be green space drainage slash flooding. We recognize that flooding and drainage is a legitimate concern certainly across the city. Uh, in our, in our humble submission, sir, we will be making an improvement on the current condition. If you have had the chance to see, um, that area, you will have seen that there's already a very large concrete parking pad there. And that's the kind of concrete parking pad that collects the rain and sends it straight into the street and into the public infrastructure. We will have, uh, uh, soft landscaping in the front that will be absorbing that water, water that was not previously absorbed. Uh, also addressing a concern with green space and tree neighborhoods in the city. We, uh, have on our site plan the indication of a tree that can be planted on the front yard. And so the addition of a tree where there was not, uh, where there wasn't one. Um, there's also the concern with parking and, and it's very understandable that people would be concerned with parking. It, it's one of those things where you, you're, of course, neither, uh, neither we nor the objectors have objective data to demonstrate what the situation will, will be. We don't know, uh, what the transportation needs of, of the renters would be in this case. However, if we begin to prioritize the needs of storing cars over finding places for families to live, I think that we're misunderstanding where council is headed and what it is that it's asking us to do by considering fourplexes and garden suites. That also indicate that, I understand the objectors said that there's no, currently not a permit parking, uh, scheme on the street and that suggests to me that there probably is more than enough capacity for, for additional cars on the street. Finally, I did want to address the, uh, specific, uh, concerns raised by the neighbor to the south. I understand that this is going to be a change if approved to what he is, um, what he's used to. With that said, as he indicated himself, he's on the higher ground. And so although there will be the massing of the garden suite against his yard, he will be on the higher ground, uh, from that condition. Uh, and there's not any other neighbor that's, that's impacted, you noticed the, with respect to the neighbors nearby. There's a driveway to one side and a blank wall on the other. Um, those are my direct, uh, responses to the concerns we, we heard. Understandable concerns, but not concerns, uh, that I would submit to you are adequate for, uh, for the basis of refusing this application.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Panel, questions?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, uh, they're related, oh, sorry, uh, they're related, uh, there's a related questions, uh, on the garden suite. Um, I must have missed your presentation when you say you can, um, increase the distance to the, from the main residential by half a meter, right?
Correct.
But how do you do, because we don't have the plan here.
Our, so my client has prepared plans and, and very late, I understand this morning those plans have been sent, but they're, uh, so I, I, I actually.
Describing.
Yeah, no, but, but that would be reflected on the plans. The variances would not allow for more than that. Uh, I suspect that it's a reduction in the, uh, in the size of the, the garden suite itself.
Yes, that, that, that's, yeah, that's a description that, how to achieve it, that's what I'm saying. So i- in that case, I will that, um, uh, will your drawings that we have, uh, on the garden suite elevation showing the angular planes, uh, will that be still, uh, those still apply, right?
Yes, we would still be, we would still have protrusions into the angular planes.
But also will not be like, uh, altered, is, uh, what we see is about.
Yeah, correct. There's.
Be better, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, I would think that it might be marginally better, yes. Certainly there's, yeah, there, there certainly is the option. I mean, once you, I would agree that the increasing of the space between the garden suite and the, and the main house makes a significant difference.
Although, uh, mainly if, I do not know where you reduce it, you'll be reducing towards the house. It's probably the only one, uh, angular plane will be, uh, improved, which is, uh, is a partially angular, um, that's on that elevation. So, okay, this is, this is my, my.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, good morning, Mr. Flat. Thanks for, uh, your presentation today. Um, just a couple of follow-up questions from the deputations you've heard from the neighbors. Uh, the first is, can you confirm, uh, whether this is a fourplex plus a duplex or a fourplex plus one garden suite?
It's a fourplex and a garden suite, sir.
Thank you. Uh, secondly, in terms of the angular planes, um, requirements, uh, the projections. Can you confirm that while you're providing angular, uh, planes in the drawings, uh, they are no longer required through, uh, Ontario regulation, I forget, four-six-two dot slash nineteen?
Correct, angular planes are no longer required.
Right. Uh, number three, uh, stormwater, um, uh, stormwater is typically, um, addressed at building permit stage, is that correct?
Uh, certainly it's a requirement, yes, yeah.
But, but you've, you've considered it in your, in your plans?
We have, uh, in, in large part because variances to soft landscaping, we believe the intention of those, of those provisions and those zoning is to provide for, uh, correct drainage and infiltration.
And I noticed that on your site plan, the one that we have, by the way, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and, and through you, uh, Madam Secretary Treasurer, if we have the plans that were received this morning, is there not any way that we can?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do not have these plans.
Okay.
And anything that was sent through an email is way too late at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, uh, I noticed that, uh, on the plans that we have, uh, before us, the, uh, walkway, um, uh, on the north end or the north, uh, lot line along that is, you're using, uh, permeable pavers.
Correct, sir, yes.
And will that assist in stormwater drainage?
I understand they do, sir.
Okay. Uh, and finally, uh, you've heard neighbors talking about concerns for views, um, in terms of, uh, you know, the height of the building, uh, uh, in terms of, you know, not seeing sun, et cetera. Can you address that?
It's normal to love your neighborhood the way it is. It sometimes changes. Um, we believe that the, this is a scale of built form that's contemplated for neighborhoods. It will be, uh, somewhat different perhaps than what people have become used to, but it will not affect, especially with the sloping in the area, the ability to enjoy views in many other directions.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, all right, just a couple from me. Um, height. Uh, your client kind of has a model that they use in these instances and routinely, uh, we're seeing applications that are exceeding the height requirement. Um, and I'm just looking, and thank you for reducing it, that's great. Uh, but I am noticing you've got nine-foot ceilings in the, so, uh, is that, is that the model that, uh, you're, you're using? And then, I mean, for example, you could make those eight and a half feet and still comply with the, the height by law. I'm just wondering, isn't there a way that this model can be adjusted to bring it into conformity with the height? Height is what frankly gets people's ire up. I mean, it's the visual, it's the height, and when they exceed the height, that's, I think, gets people's attention.
Right.
And I'm just wondering why, you know, eight-foot ceilings are, that's, my house has eight-foot ceilings. So I'm just wondering why your client, uh, is choosing to go nine foot and exceeding the height by law as opposed to going eight or, or something less than nine and, and, and could bring it into conformity with the height by law?
In full disclosure, sir, I'd be speculating if I was to try to understand why my client.
I know they're listening.
One, one design, and I was going to say that, one design choice over another, um, in terms of, and, and, and of course, I would invite you to have some deference to their, um, marketing choices. Not in the sense that they trump the planning requirements of this tribunal, but as we ask ourselves why these ceiling heights and not others. This client is an experienced, um, developer and markets these units consistently and knows what sells. And by knowing what sells, they're building, when we're seeing condos come.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be argumentative, but I would argue, I would argue that your client routinely comes in with height variances for.
Right.
Uh, these, so I'm just wondering if the, maybe it's a message back to your client, if there isn't a, a way that, um, this could be done in a way that would be a little bit more sympathetic to the neighbors on height.
They're listening and I absolutely will bring that back to them this morning.
The second question is, uh, is the rear stairs, are they code?
It's required to, for fire, yes.
It's code, it's fire code?
It's fire code.
That's, I just wanted to, uh, clarify that. All right, Peter, anything? All right. Anything else, panel? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members.
All right, we'll take this into committees. Who wants to start us off?
Start the comments first, I wanted, because it's fresh, I want to just respond to what, what discussions about the height. Uh, I, I know it's almost like asking a question, why do you have to build a house bigger than the bylaw? I mean, people's, this is, to me, is people's reasons and choice. And we are looking at it as, at whether it's a minor variance. And also, I want to comment also, uh, the question about site. I know that the certain things are of, uh, uh, are the rights, but sideline, I was told many years before that it's not a right. And so what I'm trying to say is not to be sympathetic with people, builds have new buildings around them. But it's, uh, the reason is that, uh, is to expect changes in their neighborhood. So sidelines is not a right or a protected right, I mean. It's a, it probably is a right for individual enjoyment, but it's not a protected right. That's the comment I like to make, yeah. And, and, uh, I, I, I listen to other comments of me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dino?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I was somewhat, um, concerned with some of the variances before, uh, today's presentation. Um, and, uh, I do acknowledge that while, uh, the revisions we've been, uh, advised of today are still minor, I think it's an improvement on the, the project. Uh, and the variance is being requested. While I think the site itself is somewhat tight and narrow with a seven point six meter frontage, I still believe that this project is a worthwhile project and the variances, both individually and cumulatively, um, do satisfy the four tests. In terms of the height, uh, as I, I believe I, I, uh, suggested to one of the deputants in opposition, uh, if the main house and the garden suite were separated, uh, by the seven point five meter setback, uh, the permissible height of the garden suite would be six point three. Uh, we're now at a separation distance of seven meters and a height of six meters and that's a difference of, you know, to the, uh, as of right height of about, uh, half a foot and a foot and a half in terms of separation. So I consider those, those, um, variances to be minor. Uh, I, I do understand the concern with stormwater runoff. Uh, I think that will have to be addressed at building permit stage. I don't think we received any comments from urban forestry about the, um, canopy, the, uh, the, uh, urban canopy. Uh, it's been confirmed this is a fourplex and a garden suite for a total of five units, not six. Uh, the angular planes, uh, I'm going to, uh, make an assumption, and I know you're not supposed to make assumptions, but, uh, my understanding is that the reason that there are variances for, uh, production of angular planes is because this, uh, this application was considered by, uh, zoning before, uh, the regulations were, uh, and the performance standards were, were adopted and, and changed. Uh, so, um, all in all, uh, I'm going to, uh, move a motion to.
Hang on a sec, sir, uh, Dino, finally, Peter, did you have any comments?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll hold. Oh, uh, just before, uh, Peter, if, if I can. If I'm going to move a motion though, I want to tie a condition, uh, that this be constructed substantially in accordance with the site plans, but at this point, we don't have the updated plans, so that's a problem for me.
We can't, uh, I think what Sabrina is saying is that we haven't seen them, so we can't tie it to them.
Yeah, I know.
All right, Peter, did you have any?
Yeah, well, no, I, I mostly agree with what, what's already been said. I, I do want to acknowledge, um, all the neighbors who came down to speak and I, I understand their concerns and, and I think they're valid concerns. The, then, the neighborhood is starting to change with this, this type of building. But I think it's important that we remember this is what city council has put forward. This doesn't, as it's proposed, um, it's not completely in line with what has been proposed, what has been approved by council, but the variances that they're asking for, I do believe are, are quite minor and, and will be really not necessarily, noticeably, noticeable from, from the street, a lot of them. I, like, we're talking a lot about height, but it's still just, it's, it's less than forty centimeters over what's permitted as of right. So this, these are, this is going to be a big structure and a, and a big unit in the backyard, but that's what the city is looking for. And I, I do believe these variances are minor. Um, but getting back to the point about tying it to plans, I think the, um, because we can't tie it to plans, I think the permeable path is important, so I think we should add that as a condition.
Yeah, the permeable paper on the, on the walkway here, is it, what, is it on the north side or?
Yeah. All right, thank you. Uh, all right, Dino, now, if you want to, uh, take a crack at your motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll move, uh, motion to approve with the condition. Uh, to Peter, just, uh, for ease.
Yes.
Just to be clear, that's the permeable pavers on the north sidewalk.
I think as an urban forestry, three, in the supplemental, uh, package.
There's a four, urban forestry condition number three?
Three, yeah.
Okay.
And, and as amended, right?
As amended.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Motion, motion by Mr. Lamardi, uh, to approve with those conditions. Seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor? You have your approval, sir, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Why don't we move on to item number seven? Which is six-ten Dundas Street West. This is an application to legalize and maintain a rear three-story addition that was constructed without an authorized building permit. Also to permit one residential dwelling unit within the rear portion of the ground level behind a non-residential use. There are a total of two dwelling units and one non-residential unit. Committee has before three photographs of subject property, covering letter from the agent and in order to comply with the subject property. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Yeah, and good morning.
Name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Anthony Tang, I'm the applicant, also the agent for six-ten Dundas.
All right, sir, this one is a pretty high-profile uh property.
Yes, because uh.
So I'm sure you'll share with us a little bit of the history, but I can tell you that the members have uh have raised some questions and concerns about this one that perhaps can be addressed by your presentation, but uh we may have some questions.
Yeah.
So you've got five minutes.
I'm here for to answer questions, but the ax, uh, well, actually, I should say, the accident, the um the neighbor wall collapse is actually before they decide to come to community adjustment. So we applied for zoning. Well, first of all, the history is the lady bought the house, which is Ms. Ms. Wu. When they purchased the property, so is at S, they they had no idea what happened for the addition, whatever. And just a couple of years ago, that they were thinking, they they were thinking to updating all the interior um so-called units to up to bring up to building code. And that's why, but they they didn't apply for a permit at that time. That's why the building inspector come in and and find out that actually the two addition, the addition from for the house itself, if there are two times that they haven't been applied for for permit, that will be back into maybe eighty or ninety.
So just to be clear, so uh so the panel members are clear on this one. So uh there was a collapse in the property.
A next door. Not 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 the wall, the the next door neighbor.
So your so your property is intact?
Yeah, intact, but then because they have to pull down the two of them together.
So so when it was demolished, your property got demolished as well?
Yes, that exactly. They have the demolish too, so.
So the building perm, so the order to comply is related to what?
The order to comply is actually when they tried to do the interior renovation that time. The inspector go in to and find out the actual addition, there are two addition uh way back, I don't know when. And they they when they purchased the property, they don't even know there's an addition there.
Okay.
So this is way back. So I don't know previous owner, that that's the that's the thing. When we applied for um zoning review, we did actually uh put out what stage they, you know, whoever the uh did the addition is. But the original, like this new owner, Ms. Wu, she doesn't know anything about the building itself.
Okay, uh, I mean, we've got a presentation before us. If it's critical, guys, uh, we can ask a question now?
Yeah.
Okay, Dino?
Can you, uh, staff, if if I can ask, can you pull up the three pictures that have been submitted with this file? Um, so to the.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, did you take these pictures?
Yes, this picture is actually before the actual.
No, no, so so you're getting ahead of me. Did you take all three pictures?
Yes.
What are the dates of these pictures?
Uh, this picture I talk is about in the summer. I don't exactly know the dates.
This summer, summer twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Well, I I, sorry, Mr. Chair, I was there yesterday, and that is not what this looks like.
Okay, the collapse, the collapse of the neighbor wall is actually happened. I don't know which exactly dates.
I can tell you the exact date. I was there. I I was at the scene.
Yeah.
But I'm walking.
But but this picture we talk.
You, um, can can you let me also finish because you're asking, you said you do not know something. I want to tell you something. Uh, it's August last year, it collapsed, uh, August twenty some some, I was walking, walking to it. The whole area was.
Sorry, Jim, August twenty twenty four.
Okay, I'm.
Twenty twenty four, yeah.
Twenty twenty four.
Can I make a correction? True, the picture is not taking this year. I'm sorry, I mixed up the day because we've been applying for so long already.
No, I I'm so sorry. I I I just say that also I have a question to ask you. You said that you have, uh, you you tried to bring the thing to code.
Up to date, yes.
When the inspection was done in two thousand twenty-two.
Yes.
When the uh order of comply was issued.
Yes.
That at that time, uh, how did you bring it to code with our permit?
No, I, okay.
How did how did that happen? And also, that was two years ago, and the order of comply issue to the same owner, Ms. Wu.
I asked.
And and can I finish?
Sure.
Uh, it's like, uh, two years, um, at least two years before the building collapsed. And during that time, did you apply, you said that you have tried or you have applied for zoning certificate? Did you apply a zoning certificate doing before the building collapsed or be?
Before before the building collapsed, before the neighbor collapsed. You can you can trace it back all the dates. Is it is it is what since the.
I don't have any dates, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, no. We we start the procedure actually, well, almost like two, two and a half years ago. So I told them, because when they come to me and I told them, listen, you have to do it properly and do it legally. So that's why they they received that come uh the order to comply that time, which was which which was three years ago.
Did you file this a zoning certificate?
Yes, yes.
I will.
We we.
So I I'm I'm, I mean, I I appreciate this.
Yeah.
We could be here forever trying to figure this out. So maybe, panel, with your indulgence, why don't we let the agent take us through his presentation? And if we have any further questions after that, then we can ask them. Okay? Okay, sir, I'm going to start the clock now. You have five minutes.
Okay. The whole reason they want to apply for the for the variance at the back is actually the building is existing. When they purchased the building, it was like this. It's not that they put any addition or any other uh uh change to the building itself. But when the contractor told them, you you're in your interior need to be renovated because it's not comply with the building code and all the fire code, they agreed. So that that's what they started to do during the renovation. But the contractor didn't tell them you have to apply for permits, so they didn't apply for permit. So the building inspector came, uh, went in three years ago almost and go in and and look at it. And then they prob and the gentleman probably found out from the city uh archive that they didn't, they do have addition actually for that building, I don't know how many years ago. So that's why the whole thing come out, and then they come to me. And I said, okay, why don't we do a zoning review and check what the zoning actually uh you have problem with? And we're going to be go for community adjustment. This is what started from these, at at least about three years ago, almost. So that's a history coming back. So we applied for a zoning review about a year and a half ago and got the review come out for the for for the two variants. And that's why we apply for community adjustment.
Right. Okay.
And then we want to try to make it more legal and make make everything's.
Right, under, yeah. Um, so uh the front part of the second story along that strip is all removed, right?
Yes.
So does does what year before us today have anything to do with the new construction in the front?
Hmm, no.
Okay, so this is just specifically to an existing.
To the existing condition.
Rear of the building.
Right, right.
Which was done a few years ago, and you're trying to bring it into comply.
Bring it to comply, yes.
Okay, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so panel, does everyone understand that?
Yeah, that so to.
Okay, so hold on a second, sir. Are you finished your presentation?
No, we, I'm just saying that they want, they in the process of applying building permit. Well, we already start doing it that with with our structural engineer and everyone to re actually reconstructed the front facade and the second floor, the the front part of it.
Right.
So we want to make it everything legal.
Right.
Like uh comply with the uh building department and the fire code. And now I'm just asking for for the variance actually get it clear.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. All right, questions, Jim?
So do we still, then then do we need to revise the purpose clause to add to reconstruct the second floor front front portion? Or the.
I don't think, well.
Then and then also legalize what the additions, the two.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's not what's before us today. What's before us today is for the rear addition that was constructed without an authorized building.
So I think Sabrina's meant point is that uh it may be that they need a building permit to do the front work, and they may or may not need variances for that. And if they need variances, they'd have to come back to this committee.
I see those were.
It's a separate piece. He's only really here today for the rear part of the dwelling.
Okay.
Yes, because we applying for another building permit for the front part of.
Right.
So if any variance on the front part, we will, we will come back here.
And that's.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Dino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to be pedantic, pedantic here, but I I'll go back to the photos. Why did you not submit photos that are current?
Because it's going to be confusing the community. That's what I'm saying. We were, we were thinking.
Well, uh, hold, so it's confusing to me.
Yeah.
Having these pictures because I I was there yesterday.
Yeah.
And there's basically a shell of a collapsed.
Yes.
Building for all three units.
Yes, yes.
So my question to you, follow-up, is, well, first of all, why did you not submit current photos?
The reason is, then you won't see what exists, what they are existing going to be. But two, I could take another photo is before the collapse, uh, this is before the collapse or after the collapse.
Okay, so follow-up. You are before this committee asking, or your client is, asking to legalize and maintain.
Yes.
I don't know what you're asking us to legalize and maintain, because there is really not much there.
No, so I think what the agent is saying is that the rear portion.
The rear portion.
Which is still standing is not in compliance with the by law.
Through, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair, if it helps for clarification, perhaps the committee consider deferring the application until photos of the front, side, and rear of this property are submitted. And perhaps maybe they should go to the building division and determine if they're going to need variances for the front portion. I don't know. I mean, I I understand uh member Lombardi's issue of the fact that there were photos that were submitted that aren't actually uh true today on site, uh, but that's an option here. And and maybe maybe the landowners um start looking at building permits for the front portion. And if there are variances associated with that, they they update this application to reflect that. I don't know, but I mean, I do, I shouldn't ask a question, but I do.
That's okay.
Uh, are you going through court services right now that you're in a in a bind to get this a decision on this application sooner than later? Or are you not on a deadline?
No, I don't, I I'm not quite clear because uh they have a big family.
So there's no court order?
No, there's no court order.
Okay.
It's no court order there.
You're not under any deadlines to receive an app.
No, but we did communicate with the building department with with this issue, and they were, they're okay, they're all okay. They were saying waiting for 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 your community of adjustment decision.
So what I hear from the panel is that um it's a bit of a piecemeal uh thing in front of us, right? So if you're, if you're planning to redevelop the second story of your property.
Yes.
It sounds like you are. Um, it may be better and easier, and there's no urgency to uh to deal with the variances right now. Maybe what, as Sabrina is suggesting, you bundle everything together, like uh including if you need a variance or if you've got a building permit for the front portion of your building, bundle it together, and then you can come back to us. Uh, if we defer it, there's no extra charge. There's no urgency, quite frankly, right now. It's been out of compliance for three years. So it may be better for the panel, whoever's sitting on the panel, to have a complete picture of what you're proposing.
But do I, do I, I have a one question still. I I did actually spoke with the zoning um, yeah, examiner. He was saying if I, if I, if we uh apply for building permit, they were, they you, we have to go through again, like, let's say, the front part of um, um, the reconstruction. They still have a variance at the back because of of.
And you can bundle that together in as as one application. So you would still have come to the committee to deal with the out-of-compliance variance. But if you had a variance that you're required for the second story.
Yeah.
Then we put it all together, and then the panel wouldn't be as confused, and we'd have a better picture of what you're proposing. Okay, Dino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just conclude my remarks. Uh, typically, uh, I am loath to approve a legalized and maintained situation. I will, however, uh, consider if there's a motion to defer in this particular instance. I am, I am uncomfortable with this application as it's put forward to this committee as it stands. So I just want to clarify that I would, I would be very hesitant to uh put a motion to approve this. But I I would consider a deferral as uh possibly uh the scenario that Madam Secretary Teller uh put forward.
Okay, uh, so what you've heard, okay, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah. Uh, I'm just wondering if we apply for the uh front part of the construction. We, when we submit drawings to the city again, they, we went through, we will go through exactly the process again. They would say to to us, well, listen, we cannot look at it until you have that zoning, I mean, the the variance uh clear. So how we going to be proceed of this?
Hold on, hold on, let's just, let's just, let's just hold on. Sabrina, uh, I think what he's worried about is that he's getting squeezed, right? If he, if he comes forward with another uh application for a building permit, the zoning examiner is saying you got to clear off the order comply first.
Yeah.
Is that the case?
So through you, Mr. Chair, right now, there's an active application before committee of adjustment for the rear portion of the property.
That's right.
Okay, if you, when you go to the building division and show them the plans that you want to move forward with to construct the front portion of the building, they will do a review. If there are no variances, then you're, you come back with this application that you still have.
Okay.
If there are variances, then you're going to submit to us revised plans and a revised zoning review reflecting the front portion of the dwelling as well as this rear portion.
Right.
Right? So you're still going to use this same application. It is either going to include the entire property with the front and rear or just the rear. But you will not get a building permit on the front portion until this is resolved. And that's fine. That's what should happen, right? And the members need a a clear idea of structurally what is on site.
Okay.
And if it is safe.
Okay.
Okay?
So do they have, the client, do do they have to pay extra um?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there's no extra fee through committee of adjustment. The the fees that happen through the building division are different.
Okay.
Okay, but this deferral would allow you to go to the building division.
Okay.
Submit a full set of plans showing the front and rear of the property.
Of course.
Have a fulsome review, determine what variances are required, and then come back and use this application.
Okay, now, the last question, if the building department say, well, we couldn't look at your 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 application until your variance at the back clear, so how?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's not going to happen.
Not going to happen?
No.
Yeah.
So we will have a letter saying that actually we will be defer uh when the application.
Yeah, what what we'll do is if if you agree to a deferral, we can put a note as to what the reason for the deferral is, right? And the deferral reason will be for you or your client to return to the building department and ensure that all the variances for the entire building are included.
Okay.
That will give them some comfort that you've been here, we've told you to go back, and then they will uh uh process your application accordingly.
I agree, I agree.
So you're okay with the defer?
Yeah, as long as uh the building department understand what you your committee actually agree with, then they they will look at our proposal. Otherwise, they just, we sit back and forth and it's going nowhere.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Sarah. So you're in agreement of deferral. I'm going to bring this into committee. Um, does someone want to try a motion?
Oh, uh.
Peter?
Yeah, I I think this makes sense. I think what's before us now is unclear. And I think this, by deferring the application, it'll allow the the applicant to go back and come back with a complete application.
Yes.
Uh, so I move that we defer the application. I think Sabrina has enough language to to explain the reasons why.
Okay, all right. Motion by Mr. Reed to defer. Kind of a second there, Ms. Chan?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, you have your deferral, sir, and good luck. Uh, again, I think if you bring everything together, it'll make whoever has is in front of you uh able to understand what you're trying to do.
Okay, I'm wondering, do we have any timelines for the committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, there are, there are no set timelines, but you do want to deal with this as soon as possible.
Because what hap, yeah, what happened is like, because they're two neighbor, they they, I don't know what they what they want to.
Okay, we we understand it's complicated.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh do the best you can.
Okay.
You can only take care of your own.
I know, that's what, that's what. I know, that's what, that's what.
Do what you have to do for yourself.
Okay.
Don't worry about your neighbors.
And, and through you, Mr. Chair, the, the owner has been the owner since 2005. So I strongly encourage that anything that happens on that site has to come through the city before any construction happens. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was fun. Is it, uh, do you guys need a five minute break? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ten minute break?
Yes, ten minutes break, please turn off your videos, microphones.
Uh, we resume with item number eight, 107 St. John's Road. This is an application to construct a new rear detached ancillary building containing one parking space and an attached storage room with separate access, abutting lane south St. John's East Fairview. Uh, in the rear yard of the existing two and a half story semi-detached dwelling, the existing rear gar- uh, garage will be demolished. Committee has before a copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of trees on the subject property, arborist report, and a tree protection plan. We have email correspondence from Metrolinks and from Urban Forestry. We have three signature petition and support from owners occupants on St. John's Road. Oh, good morning. Name and address, please.
Uh, Erica Meldaisy, I'm the homeowner at 107 St. John's.
Okay, um, so this is a pretty minor application.
Compared to the ones before. Um, yeah, I just have to.
Really looking for one variance on soft landscaping, it's a modesty, and maybe you can just speak to the soft landscaping issue.
Um, yeah, I just want to, I need to rebuild the garage, I want to make it a little bigger. Um, in the process, it's still a single car garage, but we're adding some storage at the back, uh, just to maximize, uh, bike storage and stuff like that. Uh, so we're losing some grass. Um, we've opted to shrink our existing wood deck, uh, to make up some of the grass we lost, uh, but we won't get the 50% required, so I think we're at just under 42. Um, so we're asking permission to proceed with the 42.
Okay. All right, panel, any questions, Dino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, just a quick question, I know this is a fairly straightforward application, but I was reading your arborist, uh, report, and on page 12, second paragraph starts with, um, garden suite will be constructed. This is not a garden suite.
No, there's no plumbing running out here, uh, that's an error. I'm.
All right, I just want to.
Not enough space to.
Just want, just want to confirm.
Hide someone in there.
Thank you.
If anyone ever doubted, the committee members are reading every bit of me. Just proving that. Uh, anyone else? No, fairly straightforward. Okay, let's take it in the committee, who wants this one? Peter?
Yeah, I, I think this is, it's very reasonable, and I, I appreciate that there have been efforts made to make up for the, the lost green space by shrinking off, uh, the rear deck. I think the best, kind of best efforts have been made here, and, and this is where it ends up. I think it's, I think it's reasonable and satisfies the four tests, so I'll move that we approve the application subject to forestry condition two.
All right, motion by Mr. Reed to approve, seconded by Mr. Lombardi, all in favor? You have your approval, ma'am, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, for, uh, item number nine is 496 Atlas Avenue. This is an application to permit the two-story detached dwelling with a partially covered front porch with stairs, a side entrance with stairs, and a rear first-story deck with stairs. Also, a front yard parking pad will be provided as approved under previous permit. This application is necessitated as a previous, uh, minor variance decision, um, approved an application to legalize and maintain the two-story detached dwelling, uh, constructed, which was constructed without an authorized permit, did not include the current requested variance. So it sounds like some variances were missed. Committee has before a copy of the plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, previous decision numbers affecting the subject property, uh, an application, uh, for front yard parking. Uh, we have, uh, pave, a paving, a residential paving permit, and tree declaration form.
We have.
Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, no registered speaker for this item.
Good morning. Hello?
Robert, you have been unmuted.
Yes, hello. It's Robert Stubbs, I'm the agent for the owner. I'm located at 51 Alexander Street.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I think because of the history of this one, we'll need a short presentation, please.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Chair, and the members of the committee. The application is due to the construction of the two-story dwelling, not conforming with the zoning bylaws. The minor variances I'm requesting weren't addressed in previous submissions. Um, sorry, due to omission of front porch type and miscalculation of the slope to the rear of the house. The FSI was adjusted to include the basement as it is less than four feet below the finished grade and the distance of the stairs to the lot line on the south side yard. The percentage of front yard landscaping was adjusted for the stairs to the front porch. A declaration form was issued for the tree in the front yard, but it was damaged by city workers and had to be removed. The front yard parking application was also previously submitted and approved. Your consideration of this application would be appreciated, thank you.
Uh, okay, so I just want to confirm, so the tree was damaged by city staff, not, not your contractor?
That's correct.
Okay. Dino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the deputent, uh, applicant. Um, Mr. Stubbs, um, in your, uh, in the letter that you've submitted, uh, along with this, uh, application, you talk about a previous, uh, decision, committee of adjustment decision, uh, I believe it's dated July 26, 2023. And that, um, that decision, uh, the request was to legalize the, um, and to maintain the new two-story detached dwelling. Um, what, what was the? What was the, what was the requirement to legalize and maintain? Did you build, did the owner build the new two-story detached without a building permit?
No, that's, no, there, there were some, I think the, there were some errors in the construction of the house, the length of the house and the width.
Okay.
But it's a legal, it was a legal, single-family dwelling, one-story.
Well, it says two-story here, but regardless, to legalize, maintain means, that means that the, the application or the, the construction of the dwelling was not to the approved variances. Because I'm trying to understand, so your letter dated October the third, twenty twenty-five, attached with this application before us says, "The minor variances you're requesting were not addressed in previous submissions due to omission of front porch height and miscalculation of the slope to the rear of the house." Whose, whose error or errors were those omissions?
I would say myself then at the point.
So it seems to me that, that this is an iterative process. You've come before, the committee before to legalize and maintain a new two-story detached dwelling. Now you're before us again because of some omissions. Have all of the issues been addressed? Do you believe in this application that's before the committee today?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. That's my questions.
Okay, anyone else? All right, sir, thank you very much. Let's take it in the committee. Dino?
So, Chair, four and five. Sir, ma'am, Robert. Five and three. Concerned about the fact. But I do have some concern.
Okay. So I'm just looking at the, for clarification, just looking at the previous decision from twenty twenty-one. And there was a front yard soft landscaping variance approved there for fifty-eight percent. So they're asking for fifty-five now. So the difference is a three percent change from what was previously approved. So, which probably has something to do with the front porch. So I guess as a committee, we need to decide whether that incremental change represents a significant impact. Oh, my video's not on. Oh, no, it's pointing at, it's pointing down. Thank you. So any other thoughts?
Also, with respect to the FSI, you know, I'm going to use the word capped, but I'm referring to the twenty twenty-three committee adjustment decision. That approval was at point nine-three times and now it's at one point three-nine times. Now, I understand from the submission that it may have to do with the basement being included.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is probably just, I mean, it's all about how deep it is, right? So, I mean, my view would be, I don't agree with this, it sounds like it's a bit of a problematic application in terms of making errors.
Yes.
But I look at the incremental change from previous approvals and I'm not terribly concerned that it's a significant change.
I do note that there's a similar sized dwelling next door at four ninety-four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm open to suggestions in terms of motions from the other members.
Okay, anyone else? Peter? Oh, sorry, Jim? Can't see you over there, you gotta sit up higher.
Sorry, it's not that I knew the comment, but I do agree with Dino when he observed the increase in FSI, but then I accept the explanation of including them. I said, okay, yeah, because if we still need to catch the omission and variances, why such a big increase? He should provide the answer and I accept that. And I, yeah, I agree with the loss of landscaping, if you go back to the, what's required, this seems to be a big, a big decrease, but if you look at the two thousand twenty-one approval, it's like three percent decrease. I hope that they're not going to keep asking for this.
Yeah, let's hope this is the last time they come back. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I was, I was less concerned about the FSI just because of, I think it's a couple inches of height that, that gets it to be included, but I was about the open space in the front yard. But I do think that this is kind of within the pattern of development of this area, like everyone has a driveway and then grass beside it. So it is below the seventy-five percent, but I do think that it actually fits in with the, with the pattern. So I can support this.
Okay, I'll need a motion?
I'll bring a motion to, to approve the application without condition.
All right, motion by Mr. Reed to approve, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor. You have your approval, sir, thank you. Okay, move on to item number ten, three twenty-five Markham Street. This is an application to alter the existing two and a half story detached dwelling by constructing a new rear two-story addition, a reconstructed covered front porch with stairs, a front second story balcony, second floor balcony, an enlarged rear third floor rooftop deck and a rear ground floor deck with stairs. Also construct a new detached two-story ancillary building containing a one-car garage on the main level and a laneway suite on the second level abutting the right laneway. There'll be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot and. Second. Okay.
Yes, sir. Point of order, if I can just note before we get to a presentation, through you to Madam Secretary Treasurer, this is a two and a half story semi-detached, I believe, not detached. Can we make that correction?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that's fine, we can. I believe, yeah, we can make that correction. The other thing I wanted to note is that under the very late materials, and this is to the presenter, Transportation submitted an email regarding the laneway widening, so perhaps the applicant can speak to that.
Okay, thank you. Committee has before a copy of plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, nine photographs of the subject property, rental housing demolition and conversion declaration of use and screening form. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry, from, two, two from Urban Forestry, one is an advisory memo. We have a staff report from Transportation Review. There's correspondence and concern from Mr. Tennyson, no address provided. There is correspondence and opposition from three twenty-seven, two court pieces from three twenty-seven Markham, three pieces from three twenty-seven Markham Street. Okay, we have the.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and one registered speaker in opposition here in person.
All right. Good morning. Bam. Hello? Cindy? Did we lose her?
James, you have been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address, please, sir.
Actually Cindy is here with me, so.
Oh, okay. Is she speaking?
Hi, is Wesley, I thought my agent was going to start.
Who's, what's your agent's name?
Wesley Lim.
Do we have Wesley as a speaker?
Hello?
Hello, is this Wesley?
Yes, that's Wesley, hi.
Hi, full name and address, please, sir.
So Wesley Lim, I'm with WK Lim and MP Liu Architects, address is seven oh six Euclid Avenue in Toronto, and I'm here in attendance with Priscilla Liu, also of the Architects firm, and we are the architects for the homeowner Cindy Lam, and also in attendance is James Lim.
All right, sir, we're going to need a short presentation from you.
Okay, so it's an existing semi-detached house, and the proposal is to renovate the existing house, demolish a small existing addition, and this addition, of course, goes way back, and we're going to be constructing a, sorry, the existing addition is a single-story, and it's an old addition, it's not in great shape, so part of the renovation is we're going to be demolishing that one-story addition and building a two-story addition with a roof terrace, and it'll be a slightly larger footprint than the original addition. And then there's also a laneway suite in the back with space for a single-car garage. And then at the front, there's an existing porch, and also it's, it's, it's old and it's, it just requires some refreshing, so we're going to rebuild the porch and also provide access to the roof of that porch, and we'll be adding a transparent glass railing. So the exterior appearance of the house really is not significantly changed.
Okay, that's it?
Well, we have received some reports from Transportation, and they advised us of lane widenings under the official plan, and we have communicated with them that we can comply with the conditions that they outlined in their report. And I think with that, they, they don't have any objections to this application.
All right, that's the late material, right?
Yes. Now, we also received a report from Urban Forestry, and this just came in yesterday, but we've reviewed their conditions and we can, we can comply with those conditions. The conditions are really to make applications to them, but there really is no intent to remove or injure the existing tree in the front yard. So I'm hoping that this is just a matter, of course, that we make an application to Urban Forestry. I mean, the minor construction of the front porch should not have any effect on that existing tree, but on the site plan, we've already shown that we will be providing tree protection for that tree. It's an existing Norway maple, very old, quite big.
Okay, I would note that the, the memo from Forestry is just advisory, it's not a condition.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, sir. I'm sorry.
And then we are aware that some letters have come in of objection, and perhaps we'll just respond to those after the, after the authors of those letters make their comments.
Okay. All right, Dino, a burning question?
Thank you. Just one, through you, Mr. Chair, to the deputent. Speaking about the letters of objection, there's one from a neighbor indicating that they'd like a deferral of the hearing based on the fact that the notice, the public notice sign is incorrect or inadequate because it refers to a detached dwelling as opposed to a semi-detached. So there is a concern about misrepresentation of the property type. Can you speak to that, please?
Well, I don't believe there should be a deferral because, I mean, our application submitted that this is an existing semi-detached. I think it just, it was just a mistake on this, on the wording of the, of the notice, but it doesn't change the application. And also, to borrow a phrase, it is what it is. I mean, it's an existing house that's a semi-detached. They're on the other side, they know it's a semi-detached. I don't see how this can have any bearing on deferring the application. It's just, as mentioned earlier, it just needs to be corrected.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, we, no, we have a speaker. If we can hold till after the speaker, that'd be great.
Those who are here in person for this item can kind of come to the podium, please.
Good morning, sir. Is your microphone on? Hold on, hold on a sec, hold, just get the microphone in front of you, and if I can have your name and address, please.
Yes, good morning, Chairs and members of the committee, and my name is Paul Wong. I'm the eldest son of Shulang Wong and Yim Song Wong, they're in the back, the three two seven Markham Street, so.
You're the adjoining semi?
Yes, I'm the adjoining semi, that's correct. So I wrote the, I wrote the letter up behalf of my, my parents as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we are here to strongly object to applications. We did request either denial of the variance or the immediate defer of this, this hearing. The reason why it's just that it should be deferred because a public notice sign on the three two seven Markham Street is materials incorrect, right? The sign is stated three two seven Markham Street is a detached house. Well, this is false. Both three two seven and three, and three twenty-five are semi-detached property that shares a common structural wall, roof and drainage system. It has a huge impact on three two seven Markham Street, right, and which is my parents' house. And I know that the agent is trying to minimize it, but it does have a huge impact on us when, when this construction is going to go through. Now, this is actually kind of misrepresented the representation that minimized the impact on my parents' home at three two seven Markham Street, and also compromised the due process. So we formally request a deferral and investigation in the misleading sign because when I look through the documents with the sign, you can't even see it. You cannot even interpret it not clearly. I also attached some pictures regarding the detached house. As you can see in the pictures, I'm not sure it's able to show, it's a detached, you have a common wall, even a common back sections, roof section, everything. It's that, so if it's detached, it seems I misrepresented. So I'm just saying that was our formal deferral request received or considered in terms of that first.
Okay.
And just talking to my parents just right now, they also reported that there's a, there's a, so if you look at this picture, so you cannot even see, you cannot read the writing when it's submitted.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair, I think we need to get past the signage.
Yeah.
We know it's a semi-detached. How is this proposal impacting?
Because you're representing the public, right?
Okay, let's, let's get past that. Let's talk to the reasons for the variances and how it impacts your parents' property.
So therefore, as you're saying that, it's not going to be considered.
And so why don't we just continue with your presentation? What the committee's interested in knowing is how this proposal is going to impact on your property.
Yeah, so I wrote a detailed, I think, two-page letters already of all the objections, but I'll try to summarize it because I only have five minutes, right?
You've got two minutes left.
Two minutes, okay. So, so first of all, that I'm just going to address the legal test under the Planning Act, which is the four, four test, right? So the variance is not minor, the purpose. It's that, um, so it's, if it's detached, it seems I misrepresented, so. Um, I'm just saying that was our formal deferral request received or considered in terms of that first.
Okay.
And just talking to my parents, uh, just right now, um, they also reported that there's a, there's, um, so if you look at this picture, so you cannot even see, you cannot read the writing when it's submitted.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair, I think we need to get past the signage.
Yeah.
We know it's a semi-detached, how is this proposal impacting?
Because you're representing the public, right?
Okay, let's, let's get past that, let's talk to the reasons for the variances and how it impacts your parents' property.
So therefore, as you're saying that, it's not gonna be considered.
And so why don't we just continue with your presentation? What the committee's interested in knowing is how this proposal is going to impact on your property.
Yeah, so I wrote a detailed, I think, two-page letters already of, of all the, uh, objections. But I'll, I'll try to summarize it, because I only have five minutes, right?
You've got two minutes left.
Two minutes, okay. So, um, so first of all, that, um, I'm just gonna address the legal test under the, the Planning Act, which is the four-four test, right? So the variance is not minor. The proposed relief from a zoning bylaw is not a minor. It's a fundamental change of the built form that exceed multiple limits, as you see the applications. The application also seeking relief for the building depth of twenty-one point three meters significantly exceed the maximum of seventeen meters. Uh, this application also contains a series of accumulated variance, including the reduced rear yards and side yard setback and the laneways suite that is, is too close to the center line, I think only two-point-four-four meters. This pattern demonstrate a fundamental disregard for the bylaw intended to control the building massing. So the share wall is a risk. So most, most important, this variance is not a minor because of sheer structural dependency. Any deep foundational and structural change of three-two-seven Markham Streets is risk disturbance to structural integrity. Our share, uh, semi-detached building causing stress and potential damage to three-two-seven Markham Streets as well, right? So I, I, I showed some pictures, if you look in the back, they all shared, shared together. The roofing, we actually did the roof together, we have to, um, have no choice. Um, um, the other point is that, um, it's not desirable and appropriate. Um, the increase in building height and depth will result unacceptable loss of sunlight and overshadowing on my parents' backyard and a small garden that they, they have directly impact the quality of life. This is lots of reasonable, you know, residential amenities, so. And the increased building amassing is a third-floor window will result a significant loss of privacy and direct overlook into my parents' private window and yards. Uh, for safety in traffic, additional multiple units include the laneway house and accompanied by construction activity will activate the construction and cause serious health and safety concern in the narrow, very narrow laneways I use extensive by neighborhoods and residents, including, you know, childrens.
Sir, I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up, please?
Yep, um. Um, so I must speak in behalf of the tremendous impact on an application has on my elderly parents. Like, my, my parents, they're in their eighties, they have very, uh, long-term, uh, disabilities. And, uh, in addition, uh, regarding the, uh, saying that the forestry application, um, my parents also stated that they have caused, uh, the city three-one-one that recently there's a tree cut down in their backyard, uh, without any permit. They have spoken to the city, and I could see pictures in there before this.
Sir, I'm, I think we've got, uh, the gist of your concern, thank you very much, uh, Dino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, just two questions for you, quickly. You talk about, uh, concerns about the height
Yeah.
of the proposed building. Um, you, you acknowledge that there are no variances for height or exterior main wall height? That are being requested?
Yeah.
So the height isn't changing?
But in the back, they, uh, they're building, uh, um, I believe that, uh, ex- extension of the way.
But you're acknowledging that there are no variances for height, maximum height of the building, or exterior main wall height? There are no variances here before us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, second, your, uh, parents', uh, I'm not sure if it's yours as well, your dwelling.
Those are my parents', yeah.
Okay, three-twenty-seven, uh, does it extend, uh, length of the building extend beyond that of currently of three-twenty-five?
No, we are the same, same thing, same, everything is the same, in the back.
Cause I'm just looking at the, um.
So they, if they extend it, it will be different, and the share wall, you have to, you know, so.
So I'm just looking at the, uh, site plan for the proposal before us. And I don't know if that's an error on the part of the, uh, the, uh, applicant, but it, it looks like three-twenty-seven, the building extends, the length of the building extends beyond. In a sense, I mean, I, I can see that there is a further extension at the back of, the rear of three-twenty-five. Uh, okay, uh, thank you, that's.
Alright, sir.
If you wanna have the picture showing that.
Thank you, anyone else?
Letters?
Uh, I, not in the same letter, but somewhere in your, uh, objections that, um, you mentioned, oh, your dad, I think that is in the Chinese one, Chinese letter. Mentioned, uh, there's a chimney that's his concern, and it's a shared chimney.
It's a share, yeah, it's a share too.
So, so that is, uh, very good. This is shared chimney that you, you might affect that chimney.
Well, I think that, um, I think, uh, everything is that if you build anything, because it's, it's everything shared, there might some im- impact, right? I think that's why he's trying to, like, express. Like, for how extend that, then we have to look in detail, because that doesn't show that, um, the impact, right?
Oh, yeah, but only because, uh, there's some cases before, if they raise the roof line, your chimney will be under.
Well, that's, that's why I'm trying to express that they might, like, right now, you don't see any height difference, but I think if they raise certain, you know, um, you know, the roof, roofing structure a little bit, then they will be changing it.
And the, the second question is that, uh, they have proposed, uh, uh, the fifth-floor rear deck.
That's right.
So I, I just want to know, uh, do you have a deck?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't. So it's a, it's a flat roof right now, shared by both, both sides.
Understand, okay, thank you, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Great, thank you very much for coming down, sir.
Alright.
Alright, do we have any other speakers, that's it? Okay, we hit the agent back?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
Uh, I wonder if you could take some time to respond to what you've heard?
Uh, certainly, maybe I'll just, um, address them on an item-by-item basis. Um, with regard to the chimney, um, whatever is required, um, for the addition, um, we will, of course, have to comply with the billing code. So, um, yeah, if we, if we need to extend the chimney, um, since it is a shared chimney, I don't think there's any, um, any interest in, uh, degrading that chimney. If it needs to be extended, we can extend it. Um, actually, from this photograph, it looks like the chimney is independent. You can just go back on that, yeah. That, that chimney is on the south side, which isn't shared on the north side. Is there another chimney that, um?
I think so, if you look at the front photograph, you see there's a chimney in the middle of the, uh, between the two houses, uh, uh, partly, you can see it from the front photographs of the.
If it's, if it's the front chimney, we're not, we're not touching that at all. The only, the only effect is at the back.
Okay.
And one thing I would like to bring to the committee's attention, I mean, this, this is sort of leading into the next point, is that the overall depth of the building, um, they mentioned the seventeen meters, that's under the bylaw, but the existing depth of the building includes the addition, the existing addition. So the existing addition already exceeds the bylaw requirement of seventeen meters. Um, from the site plan, well, actually, could Priscilla Liu be muted on this also, please, she might want to interject?
Sorry.
What?
Sorry, is there someone else speaking on this?
Uh, yes, could Priscilla Liu be, be unmuted also?
Uh, do we have Priscilla on the, on the line?
Yeah, she should be on the line.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll continue until she's on, but, but, um, from the site plan, the, um, the, the extension of the new addition, unless Priscilla corrects me, is only half a meter, the, the dimension is there five hundred and?
Yeah. Yes, hi.
So the new, the new, um, two-story addition only extends beyond the footprint of the existing addition by about five hundred millimeter.
Yes.
It's not a substantial change.
Sorry, Priscilla, uh, you're trying to jump in here, can you give us your name and, uh, address, please, for the record?
Hello, uh, my name is Priscilla Liu, uh, from, uh, WK Lim and MP Liu Architects, um, at seven oh-six Euclid Avenue in Toronto.
Alright, you have something to add?
Yes, the, um, proposed, um, overall depth of the building will be, um, extending only five hundred, which is half-meter from existing over depth.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I know my time is running out, but, but, uh, just, um, regarding the comment about the setback from the south lane. Um, the setback from the south lane is really on not affecting three-two-seven Markham Street directly. And in any case, with the, um, conditions of the transportation, we will be revising the, um, the setback to comply with a two-point-five-meter setback from the center line of the south lane. So, so in effect, um, it was too late to amend it for this, uh, hearing. But we would be, um, we really don't need that amendment any longer since we're complying with increasing the setback on the south side to accommodate the future widening of that lane. Yeah, so, so, so overall, um, it is, what we're proposing is minor. The laneway suite is, as was mentioned in a prior application today, is something that's being encouraged by the, by the city, so, um, and, um, yeah, it, it really gets down to, um, there, there's one amendment for the, um, the depth of the, of the, of the, of the building, and we're only increasing it by half a meter approximately.
Alright, thank you, sir, panel, questions?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, yep.
I, I, I'm a little bit, uh, you can clarify, on your roof plan, you said that the, uh, roof deck, it seems that it is the existing one on the existing part of the building, and you only extend it over the, uh, new addition. But from the photographs and also from the testimony or the deposition from the, the peer speaker, there's no deck at the moment, at currently. So this is, this is a completely new deck, right, extending for, um, for the whole flat roof.
That's, that's, that's correct, so.
Your joint's in, is incorrect, okay.
So, hold on here, just to be clear, so the purpose of the application, uh, speaks to an enlarged rear third-floor rooftop deck. So you're saying there is no deck there now?
No, the, the addition, um, the, the addition that's being demolished is a single-story. And we're proposing a two-story addition. And at the third floor, there is going to be a roof deck. Now, from that elevation that was, uh, that was up, uh, prior, the existing roof of this, of the, uh, what was there? There we go, that one, so.
That's all new.
Just what's hatched is new. Yeah, so there is a two-story rear part of the house, the existing third floor, to the roof of the existing second floor. And then the extension of that, uh, roof deck would be over the two-story addition.
Alright, so we will, I think we have to, we'll just amend the purpose because it's not an enlarged deck, it is, is basically a rear third floor rooftop deck. It's not an enlarged one, it's a new one.
It's, it's a new one, yeah, because it doesn't, it's not an existing one then.
Okay, we'll just amend the purpose, uh, uh, to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Yim, anything else?
No, I just noticed that the discrepancy with what the description.
Okay, good catch, anyone else? Alright, thank you, sir, uh, we'll take this in the committee. Anyone wanna start us off, Yim?
I can start with a comment, I, 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 if you look at the, sort of, the figure, um, okay, the, the only one that concerned me is the building depth. Uh, the additions, um, they say that it's only a little bit from the current, uh, one-story addition, and that's the key. And I think that I would accept, uh, it's no problem to me if the addition is one-story. And I think it does give, uh, it does create a huge impact on three-twenty-seven, yeah, and on two points. One is this addition is two-story plus a roof deck. And, and, and those, those two elements, I really think that, uh, it, it does create, um, uh, a big impact, especially the orientation or the, uh, the position of the building. Uh, this is on the south side, and then, uh, two-seventy, uh, two, three, two, sorry, three-twenty-seven is on north side. So, and also with the overlook of the, it's a huge, it's a very big deck. And I, I, I'm, I'm not too, too sure, um, that will not create a big impact. Yeah, I would accept one story, and that will be no problem with the, uh, depth, the building of the depth, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Peter?
Thanks, Chair, yeah, I, you know, I had the similar concern, Yim. Um, and I know often in these neighborhood, I, I think it's partly because these lots are quite
Deep.
are quite deep and, and narrow and, and tightly packed. So I think that, like, this is four additional meters, and that's a lot, that's a lot, I think, right? For this lot. Um, I, I agree with your point that, yes, there's an existing structure there now that the footprint is almost the same as what, but, but the second floor and the rooftop deck, I think, do have significant impacts.
Yeah.
The rest of the application, I think, I have no concern with.
Yeah.
The laneway suite is, is great, um, and the front is, is all benign. But, um, but I do have concerns with the, the depth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and also, I would think that even if they have a two, uh, two-story addition, uh, uh, on, on this, if the second story is like a slope roof without a deck on the, on the addition part, it might mitigate the impact. But instead, they're bringing everything up plus the deck. Uh, you, you, you're going to put some privacy screen, even make, make it even more massive in terms of lights on the north side, to the north side.
Right, and, and I'll, the only other thing I would add is, I mean, just looking up and down the street, based on the mapping, we have, it doesn't look like there's many other situations where, where the depth protrudes this much, right? Especially at a two- or three-story level. It's, I think it's pretty limited to these kind of mudroom attachments at the back.
Yeah.
Okay, Dino?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, same, uh, same comments. Also note that, uh, there are a number of, uh, decks or balconies being proposed. Uh, and I think, uh, at minimum, those should be OPEC screening if, if they were to, if we were to approve this application. Um, also, permeable pavers in the rear yard where there, it looks like there's some concrete proposed or walkway proposed. But yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues, I, I think the, uh, the two-story at the rear plus that, that third story, or second-story deck, large deck, is problematic.
Okay, I'm just gonna take a slightly different view. Um, the only reason I would say that is that while there is a depth variance, there's no length variance. Uh, so i- it strikes me that, um, the depth might be more of a function of the distance from the front lot line. Um, and I do note that there is no separation distance variance for, between the property and the, uh, laneway suite. So it seems to me that there is sufficient, um, space for both. But I, I do appreciate, uh, my colleagues' comments, so, um, maybe we'll just put it to a motion, see what happens. Uh, either Yim or Peter, you want to move a motion?
Well, wha- what about just denying variance one? Cause I, I don't wanna prevent the, um, the laneway suite from going ahead. Is, would you see any issue with that, Sabrina?
But then they will not have the.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then you would refuse variance number one and approve variances two, three, and four? Associated with the ancillary building?
Yeah.
Uh, sure, you can do that. That just basically eliminates the addition and allows the laneway suite to proceed.
Right.
But it also, by doing that, it, it does maintain what's existing today, it's a three-story at the rear.
Uh, no, it's a one-story.
It's a one-story.
And it's just a little shed.
The current one, it's like one story with a shed, yeah, slope roof. Yeah.
Well, if you look at the photo, uh, there's a photo of the rear yard.
Mm-hmm. The two-story is the fun, fun part of the buil- building, yeah, yeah.
If you look at the site plan, it says existing rear addition shown dotted, two-story. Uh, if we look here and look at the site plan, and it says, there's a note saying, there's a, there's a saying, existing rear addition shown dotted, there's a dotted, uh, rectangle or square, a square panel, two-story. That's one-story or two-story.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the proposed, yeah. If you go to this, this survey before that, it shows the one-story flying.
That's right, that is a two-story addition.
The two-story applied to the hatch area.
That's right.
Just as the laneway suite shown in hatching as a two-story laneway suite.
We go that route with that, uh, feet of motion, uh, if they can maintain that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll make that into a motion. I, I move that we deny variance one and approve the remainder of the variances, uh, for the reasons we've discussed.
Okay, motion by Mr. Oh, it's an amended application and also a condition?
Right, pardon me, yeah. The transportation condition and as amended, so that's with the clarification around the balcony, rear balcony and the semi-detached.
Right.
And, uh, from the amendment, could we include the permeable paper in the rear yard without?
Sure.
Walkway?
Sounds great.
And I, I, and I don't know if anyone has a concern of.
Yeah, a concern about having the, um, the balcony, the proposed balcony, uh, opaque screening?
Well, it wouldn't happen. So the balcony wouldn't proceed.
But there's another balcony though, no?
Uh, no, they confirmed that there's no balcony there now.
All right. Yeah. Okay. Those two.
Okay. Are you okay with it, Peter?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reed, uh, to approve, uh, the amended application variances three, uh, two, three, and four. Uh, with those conditions, there is a forestry advisory, uh, which we've talked about already. Uh, seconded by Mr. Lombardi. All in favor?
It looks fine.
Opposed?
Yeah.
I will oppose that. Thank you. So that motion carries. You have a partial approval. All right. We move on to item number eleven. Which is an application, which is, uh, one-one-two-eight Greenwood Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition cantilevered on the south side with the front ground floor porch with stairs and a rear basement walkout. There'll be one parking space along the south side of the dwelling. Committee has before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and four photographs of the subject property. Okay, do we have the?
We have the agent online and no registered speaker for this item.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, sir.
My name is Ali Malik Sadeh and, uh, the address is two-three-six Lesmil Road in Toronto. And I am, uh, architect and, uh, agent representing this application behalf of the owner.
Okay, hang on a sec, sir. Thank you very much. Panel, does anyone need a presentation? You want to go to questions? Sir, we don't need a presentation today, uh, but we will, I think we do have a couple of questions. Dino?
I know. I was just going to suggest that, I, I would suggest we don't.
Oh, okay. Uh, sorry. I thought, I thought you wanted a question. Does anyone have any questions?
I have the same suggestion.
I don't have any questions. Thanks, sir.
All right, sir. Uh, confirmed, we, uh, we don't need a presentation. We don't actually have any questions. It's a fairly straightforward application. The variances are quite minor. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
Um, no, Mr. Chair. Um, I think it's very minor application and it is in line with the, uh, with the other application that is approved, uh, with this committee. If there is any question, I'm here to, uh, respond.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Let's take it in the committee.
Well, I can take this, this, uh, although it's like a complete, uh, second story addition, I, I, and, and I think it is a good project. And the, uh, all the variances, uh, I can, we consider them minor and it's a good, uh, development for the site. Uh, I have a motion to approve with no condition.
All right. Motion by Ms. Chan, seconded by Mr. Lombardi. All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you very much. All right. We move on to item number twelve, fifty-two Vernon Street. This is an application to construct a two-story detached ancillary building containing a garden suite in the rear yard. There'll be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot, uh, uh, which is currently under construction as approved by previous minor variance decision. Uh, and there'll be one unit in the ancillary building. Committee has before it. A copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, redline public notice, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations received November the fifth. Five photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, previous decision numbers affecting the subject property. We have a tree protection plan, a planning rationale from the agent, and presentation materials from the agent. We have correspondence and opposition from two sixty-nine, uh, two forty-one, two forty-five, uh, St. John's Road. We have, um, sixty Vernon Street, fifty Vernon Street, and, uh, a letter from no name or address provided. We have materials in opposition from two sixty-nine St. John's Road. We have materials in opposition from two forty-five St. John's Road and fifty Vernon. There's correspondence and opposition from two thirty-three St. John's and from thirty-four Vernon. And we have the agent with us here.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent here in person and a couple of speakers in opposition in person as well as online.
All right. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, sir. It's Ian Flatt, counsel for the applicant in this matter. Um, sir, there's just one change, a minor change to the application uh, in respect of variance number one.
All right. This is a red nine, redline version?
Correct. Yes. So that you have that then, then thirty-nine point three-four percent is what is being sawed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. That is in respect of, uh, rear or front landscaping?
Uh, that's, um, rear.
Rear landscaping. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, sir. Uh, we have some folks who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Chair. We're just about there, one, five minutes afternoon. Um, at the August hearing where, when, uh, this, uh, subject site was considered, the committee raised specific concrete concerns about massing, angular planes, landscaping, access, and privacy. The revised application responds directly and measurably to those concerns. The planning policy context is unchanged. Intensification in neighborhoods is appropriate and desirable, but the proposal has changed. I will structure my remarks around the committee's own comments from August. Massing and height. The committee expressed concern regarding the perceived height and mass of the earlier design. The height remains six point three meters, but since the August hearing, City Council enacted, enacted bylaw eight forty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, which now permits the six point three meters as of right for a two-story garden suite with no angular plane requirements. Despite angular planes no longer being required anywhere in this city, this applicant added them on all sides in direct response to your requests and genuine, and, and a genuine desire for, uh, massing mitigation. The updated plans now show forty-five degree angular planes, uh, beginning at five meters on every elevation, reducing the perceived mass from the rear on both sides and from the fourplex. This is a material change. The committee asked for mitigation. The applicant did more than what the current zoning requires. In respect of rear yard soft landscaping, in August, the committee was troubled by the soft landscaping percentage and the lack of a coherent rear yard plan. The applicant has now increased soft landscaping from thirty-five point five-six percent to thirty-nine point three-four. And that's an improvement of four square meters. More importantly, the planning rationale now documents why the numerical percentage doesn't reflect actual stormwater performance. Because of the wheelchair-accessible sunken patio built for the four, fourplex, uh, basement unit, there is now thirteen point eight-four square meters of hard surface that is in fact drained. And another seven point five-seven meter square is permeable walkway. When these are added, and the committee can now only consider these because they are newly documented with this application, the rear yard area that actually absorbs and manages stormwater equals sixty-four point eight-four meter square. And as an effective area, that's fifty-eight point seven-three in real-world drainage. Two new trees have been added between the fourplex and where the suite would be if you approve it, further addressing concerns raised by the committee. The committee asked for a functional rear yard. The plans currently demonstrate the functioning and programming of the rear yard. The committee noted that absence of a proper pedestrian route to the suite, the revised plans now show a continuous permeable walkway from the north side yard to the garden suite entrance. This addresses both access, functionality, and rear yard organization. A greater rear yard setback was introduced as a change in a response to privacy concerns. The rear yard setback has been increased from point eight meters to one meter, reflecting the committee's direction to move the building southward. To address the related private, privacy concern, all second-story rear windows now include opaque privacy screening, eliminating, eliminating overlook into properties to the north. All ground floor rear windows sit below the height of the proposed new two-meter fence, eliminating rearward visibility from the main floor. The mitigation is now explicit in the planning record. Separation distance, response to requests for spatial relief. The separation distance remains at six point five meters, but the revised design now layers in the new front angular plane, which was not previously required or provided. The committee asked for meaningful built form mitigation without moving the building farther north. This approach achieves that within the constraints of the accessible fourplex patio and the hardship it creates for the rear yard percentage. Planning staff again indicate no concerns, no concerns with this revised application. The proposal complies with the official plan's directions for additional low-rise housing forms and stable neighborhoods, contributes a two-bedroom family-sized rental unit in a transit-supported area. And the new bylaw eight four-nine, twenty-twenty-five updates the citywide expectations for garden suites, including the explicit removal of angular planes and confirmation the two-story suites up to six point three meters form part of Toronto's planned build form, but we still introduce the angular planes to address concerns. This is not the same application that was before you in August. The policy context has evolved, and more importantly, the applicant has responded directly to concerns. Angular planes on all sides, increased soft landscaping, documented stormwater performance above fifty percent, continuous permeable walkway, two new trees, increased rear yard setback, privacy, uh, and privacy screening. Um, I will respond to concerns in my opportunity for rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Flatt. Uh, the one question I would pose to you before we hear from the other speakers is, it sounds like you've still got some opposition. Was there any attempt to have discussions with the surrounding neighbors?
I hasn't, I understand there were discussions. If those discussions were to the satisfaction of the neighbors, I don't know. But I'm told by my client that they have spoken with their neighbors.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Uh, is there someone here who wants to speak to this item? Do you want to come on up? Hi.
Hi there.
You can have your name and address, please, ma'am.
Uh, my name is, uh, Mary Sheena, um, and I'm, my mother lives at fifty Vernon Street, which is the property right next door. So I'm here on behalf of my family.
All right. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Um, in my, in my letter, I did include some photos. I don't know if you can pull that up, but it does show the impact of the current huge, uh, multiplex. Um, as I mentioned, um, in the last hearing, uh, you will see from the photos that I included in my letter, the floorplex completely consumes the back lot. The structure is three times the size of the house that was on the lot. It is the longest and tallest structure on the street. It's completely blocked the sightlines of the neighbors on all sides, and I provided some visuals, um, from the backyard. Um, a view towards the west, which shows the giant fire escape. Um, and the views towards the back of the lot and the view, you see the area where the proposed garden suite is going to be uh, at and, uh, the view to the east. Um, I disagree with, uh, the council that, uh, you know, you've, that, that the changes filed have, have, uh, satisfied the comments made in August. The, if I can remind you that, you know, the, the application was refused, refused based on the following reasons. The general intent of purpose of the official plan is not maintained. The general intent of purpose of zoning bylaws not maintained. The variances are not considered desirable for the appropriate development of the land. Um, and in the opinion of the committee, the variances are not minor. Other comments made at the hearing were, you know, issues with the rendering, presentation misleading, height, height is a problem. Um, no genuine effort to reduce massing impact. Um, it's large and aggressive, not well thought out, no efforts to fit or fit in or mitigate with the neighbors. Community consultation should have been considered. Um, we also provided, um, a chart of comparison of the variances from the previous applications. And in our view, we don't feel that there has been sufficient change. The plans are still for a two-story garden suite and the elevation is still the same. Yes, you know, the slope of the roof has changed. Um, and, you know, the revised list of variances hasn't changed except for a small reduction of the rear yard setback of point two meters, which is eight inches. Distances from the other structures and heights and landscaping hasn't changed. So in our view, there is, you know, since there are no significant changes being proposed, this application should not be approved. I would also like to speak to green space and waste management. Um, this is a concern. The plans indicate the property will have two garbage bins and a recycle bin. There's no mention of green bins. Three bins is not sufficient for this type of property. Usually with multiplexes, you're looking at two or three uh, of each bin, which will mean a minimum of six, if not more. So depending on the number, you know, that will depend on the number of tenants. Uh, there is very little green space left on the property. I don't care what the plans show. You know, is the requirement of green space, is it just a checkoff on the application or is there actual purpose to it? I would think that the green space is needed for the tenants to use and enjoy. Come out for a fresh, you know, fresh air, sit in the yard, have a coffee. Well, with this plan, you'd be sitting in between this massive structure of the fourplex, the fire and a fire escape, the proposed two-story garden suite, and other garb, all the bins and bike racks. I don't, I don't know about you, but this, you know, doesn't seem to be inviting. I mean, if they want to add another structure, maybe they should consider a gazebo or a patio for the tenants. Um, and, you know, and proper waste storage. I know Mod, Mod City is trying to maximize profit off of every square inch of this lot, but we are moving towards overdevelopment with these plans. The plans on paper are not a true reflection. Uh, in this case, theory collides with the, with reality. As I noted earlier, there's no significant changes being proposed, and I would ask the committee to please exercise their discretion and common sense and not approve this application.
Thank you, ma'am. Panel, any questions to the speaker? Dino?
Quickly, um, to the deputy through you, Mr. Chair. Did you attend the, um, last couple of, uh, committee adjustment meeting?
Yes, I, this is my third.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. Is there anyone else here? All right, come on up.
Hello.
Uh, just name and address, please, sir.
Yep. Uh, my name is Max Bush. I live at two-three-five St. John's Road, uh, which is behind and one house to the east. Uh, the proposal, from what I've seen, uh, first and foremost, I didn't receive anything in the mail, nor did any of my neighbors. This was only happened chance that our community has kind of gotten together and bound, uh, against this. Uh, because a neighbor happened to be walking by and saw the posted sign, but I, I understand that there was a, a, a strike going on. However, nobody was fully notified. So, and yet we were still able to band together and come in opposition. There are a lot of, uh, uh, letters of opposition from the adjacent neighbors. Uh, the council mentioned that there, uh, there were, uh, there was consultation with us and there was absolutely none. There was no, uh, amendments in the new proposal that I see that have really changed from significantly from the previous application that got, uh, shut down. And they were told to come back with a one-story that would be more amenable for the neighborhood and for the backyards of myself and my neighbors. I haven't seen what the new drawings are, but in the previous drawings, there are two major windows that overlook my neighbor and therefore my yard and my other neighbor's yards. Um, I think there, there have been very minor changes to this proposal. Despite seeming as though they're big, uh, I think council mentioned that they are, they added four meters of green space, but there's, there's still ten meters missing of green space that they, that they're asking for the adjustment. Pardon me. I'm just, I'm looking up the, the small, small variances. And again, I have nothing in front of me because, uh, I'm just kind of navigating my way through my phone. Ultimately, uh, I don't, I don't think there's been enough consultation with the neighbors. I don't think that, uh, this unit, this two-story twenty, twenty-foot-high, uh, garden suite at, uh, overlooking all the neighbors' yards and blocking the sun and taking away from the green space that is there is applicable for the neighborhood where we are. There is a desire for housing and that's understandable, but this is in the junction. In the junction, there are multiple, multiple high-rise buildings going up. We are not in need of more housing in the junction and specifically within this block. It is not, it does not fit the, the feel of the neighborhood. It, it does not, uh, fit in with the look and aesthetics of the neighborhood. Uh, if you were able to pull up, I'm, I believe my neighbor had submitted, uh, pictures from his backyard of where it would be. Um, or any pictures of the current, the current building that's there and how it's housed between two normal-sized houses. It's a, it's, it's a neighborhood of houses as opposed to complexes.
All right, sir. Just so we pull this up, which neighbor are you referring to? Uh, submitted pictures?
Yeah, so it would.
Fifty, right?
Is it fifty?
No, it'd be either, I think, two, three, seven. If you have a two, three, seven submission.
Just look through it right now. Have the ones from number fifty Vernon.
Yeah, no, it'd be two, three, seven, St. John's Road. So I would, I would like to submit that if, I don't think that enough, there's been enough notice, but I'd prefer not to go with a deferral. I, I don't think that we necessarily always want to take our time out of the day to, to contest a proposal that people within the neighborhood don't agree with. And, and so if, if anything, for them to keep coming back and pushing through the, I believe so, yes. And so, so that's, yeah, that's from my neighbor's backyard. And they would have, and so that's, that's the building as it is now. You can see with the, the green lights shining, shining on from the, from the exit, from the fire, the exit signs on the fire escape. A lot of my neighbors have complained that it shines directly into their windows. Overall, it just, it feels, everything about this feels quite shady. They've already run all their sewer lines, and I, this feels as though it's just another way to push through a project that I think this developer just kind of comes in, doesn't really care about the neighborhood, doesn't really take into consideration the neighbors, and just moves forward and keeps pushing it through until it gets through. And again, the, the variances from the first application are very minor. And I, I understand there's been a policy change, but I'd, I'd hope that you guys still decide what you had decided before. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Panel, any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, did you want to speak? Come on up. Good. Name and address, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chu Yu Deng, and my address is fifty-two Vernon Street, Unit two oh one.
You have five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. So based on the address, you can see that I'm currently living in the four-plex as completed. And I would like to say I'm one of the people who would be impacted by the proposed garden suite the most. And I am here in attendance to show my strong support for this proposal. I'd like to begin by saying that I really like, I really enjoyed living in the four-plex. It was beautifully built, modern space, thoughtful. And this is, and there is a professional property management that comes on site to keep things clean. This might go a little far, so I'm just going to adjust it. And frankly, it's a new type of housing that I'm trying out for the first time. And for the context of you guys, I lived in a one-bedroom condo here downtown, which was small and a bit old, because that's kind of the price range that I could pay for. And also, I'd like to mention that there is currently a lot of backyard space, and I think it can be better used. A garden suite is the exact type of gentle intensity that allow people like myself who can't afford a fully-built house, but still want, you know, our own privacy. And council understood that when they approved the bylaw to permit garden suites. I did appreciate a lot of what the neighbors have to say, and I'm just frankly having trouble understanding how a resident living five houses down the road that I believe are planning on speaking today is going to be impacted by the garden suite. And it is obvious that these neighbors don't want rentals. And ever since I moved here, I have not exactly felt the most welcome because, you know, I live in a rental multiplex as opposed to, you know, being a house owner on the street. So from that perspective, I disagree respectfully with many of them. That said, from, sorry, I'm just kind of losing my notes here. First, I'm speaking at the committee. Excuse myself. So from a quantitative perspective and a objective standpoint, I think the variances are minor in nature. The variances asked for are height, which is no longer a variance, and the angular plane penetration, which I don't think it's also a variance anymore. So really, what the developer is asking for is just one variance, and that is to reduce separation distance. But that is also within about ten percent of the bylaw. In my opinion, that's very minor. So I don't think there is anything aggressive that's being asked here. And as someone who currently lives in this address and will be impacted by the most and still show strong support, this is not negative change in my eyes, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions?
Thanks for your comments. Can you talk about how the, the bins work on the property now, the compost and, and green recycling?
Yeah, so at the moment, there's just scheduled services, and the builder and the property management has been quite responsive. So if there is any additional things that needs to be taken care of, they're just one phone call away.
Okay, but there, there's regular municipal pickup? Yeah, and are they're in, stored in the backyard?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's sufficient bins?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. All right, do we have someone online?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, now we can move on to the speakers online. Our first speaker. You have been unmuted.
Good afternoon.
Yes, Gabriel Buducci.
Your address, sir?
Yes, I live at two sixty-nine St. John's Road.
All right, you have five minutes.
Good evening, committee members, chair, Gabriel Buducci. I live near and behind these proposed development. Already invested plenty of time and share my concerns during the previous hearing on August thirteenth. And I will share my objection to this application again today, so as no effort had been made by the applicant to address any of the concerns and suggestions raised by the community and the committee members during the previous hearing, when a similar application was refused unanimously. I understand we have a new panel making a decision today. A member of the committee, Ms. Yin Chen, today present on this panel was Madame Chair on the hearing of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and opposed the application along with the rest of the committee members then as for, as the four tests were not met. And in her refusal closing, she had made a suggestion to the applicant that the garden suite be single-story. None of what was presented in the hearing has been considered in the proposal in front of us today. So today I can only speak for what is in front of us and what's being presented by members of the community directly impacted by this proposal. But I cannot forget the concerns and suggestions raised during the previous hearing, and I urge the committee to do the same. Five variances are presented identical to those variances already refused in prior application. The proposal failed the four tests three months ago, and it fails them again today as variances cannot be evaluated individually and not, don't appear to be sufficiently changed to make me evaluate this proposal any different from before, no matter the amendments. I understand angular plane has been removed by these recent amendments. Yet these amendments do not grant relief from required setback, separation, distance, heights, floor area, or soft landscaping provisions, most of which this proposal still violates. The bylaws still require one and a half meter setback. And yet, if I were to go and look into the bylaw amendments eight forty-nine, twenty twenty-five brought up by the applicant, they also amended a rear yard setback by adding to item two, which is variance number two, which states the one fifty seventy, seven sixty twenty to B. There's an addition to that clause that says in the C, if the rock rear lot line a butts a lot in the residential zone category and the auxiliary building containing a garden suite has openings such as windows in the rear main wall located above four meter, above the average rate, the required minimum rear side yard setback in B, which is the one and a half meter required in front of us today, above shall be increased by one and a half meter. That makes that rear yard setback three meters given this proposal. So this is not in front of us, and neither is the angular plane is in front of us. So if we were to consider the angular plane not part of this application, then we should consider the amendment to the rear yard setback as three meter because, as you can see in the rear yard elevation, the amount of windows that are above the four-meter line as per bylaw, but also as the applicant has referred to being above the three-meter fence. Privacy fences are typically not higher than two meter by the Toronto Municipal Code. Neither condition is, you know, neither that these conditions are satisfied, no separations between building, the massing of this building is just beyond. Six and a half meter required between, well, seven and a half meter required between buildings to be over four meter high. So there is, there's quite a bit of a difference there in what's being looked at. It's not a minor variance collectively, individually, and whatnot. There is trees being proposed. These are not privacy guaranteed, neither functional. There is no forestry department conditions on this. Permeable pavers also by, they're, they're not being required by any conditions further undermining confidence in the proposal. And given the lack of faith I have in this developer, I cannot consider this a reason to support this proposal. Elevations added slope roof at five meter high.
Sir, I'm just gonna, sir, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up. Yeah, your, your time's almost out, so.
Yeah, I'm about to finish. Given the repeated non-compliance, the lack of substantial changes, I respectfully request that this application be refused for the same reasons as, as before, if not more, given the amendments are not working towards their proposal whenever we speak about rear yard setback and privacy. Thank you so much.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions to the speaker? None. All right, let's move to the next.
You chair, our next speaker is from two four five St. John's Road.
Hi there, this is Michael Fenrick from two four five St. John's Road.
All right, sir, you have five minutes.
Great. Thank you very much for, for hearing from me today. I, you know, repeat the sentiments and the submissions that have been made by some of my neighbors in respect to the fact that this really is not a meaningful change to the proposed variations which were rejected back in August. You know, the massing still maintains the aggressiveness of the design. Well, really, the massing on the lot, which, you know, this is not a large, large lot. But I, I do want to speak directly to the issue of community consultation because the Mr. Flatt indicated that there, he, he understood his client had engaged in community consultation. Last weekend, the owner of the property went around to various properties that were not, that had not raised objections, so he did not come to my property despite us being home the entire day. And so there was no consultation with anybody who actually had expressed some concerns. Instead, the owner of this property, the developer, went to various properties that were further away, and you'll see that from the list of people who signed the petition that was submitted on November eighteenth. Now, I do not see it in the docket that is in front of the Committee of Adjustment because it came in, I believe, yesterday, late in the day, given that the petition that the owner filed was only filed yesterday. But it is my understanding that there was an email sent to the committee expressing concern and revoking their support for the petition from the residents of two seventy-one because of misrepresentations that were made to that particular owner of that particular property concerning the proposed development site. So it was, it was misrepresented where this proposed development site was when there was a point-blank question asked concerning whether this was a garden suite that was being proposed to be developed in the rear of the new multiplex. That is not the only concern that we have heard as a community expressed by people who signed that petition. They were told things along the lines that this was going to be a shed, an oversized shed, that it wasn't going to be on that site, of course, creating confusion with an earlier application for the, the garage that was at one oh seven St. John's, if I remember correctly, which, you know, nobody opposed because it's an appropriate change to the community. Lastly, I just want to address the concerns raised by the, by the resident at two oh one fifty-two Vernon Street. I feel, I feel badly if she feels excluded, but she shouldn't, given the large number of rental properties on Vernon Street. There are many rental units and many multiplexes already on Vernon Street, none of which have the same aggressive impact as this one. And the site is already, in my respectful view, overdeveloped, but that aside, not here to relitigate that issue. But the, the inclusion of this site will significantly impact the neighborhood, the soft landscaping and the mass on the yard. Those are my submissions today. Subject, any questions?
Great, thank you, sir. Panel, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I can ask the presenter under the very late materials to show the petition in support?
I'm sorry, it, it was dated November eighteenth.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. Please just bear with me. This is the petition of support, and it's number five. So if the presenter can present petition in support redacted?
I'm sorry, I'm on the phone. What are you asking me to do? I apologize.
I think we're just, proceed. I think the Secretary of Treasure just wanted to.
Confirm what was being said.
Confirm what was being sent in. So this is the petition in support, which has a number of properties on St. John's and Vernon. And we will ask the agent, yeah, I mean, it's not fair to ask you. We'll ask the agent to just confirm that this is the letters of, or the indications of support for this application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I was just showing who was the person that redacted their support. And so it's, it's.
Oh, number five?
Yeah, see little.
Oh, I get you. I, thank you for that. And that is two seventy-one St. John's. Okay, thank you for that.
All right, through you, Mr. Chair, the next speaker from two four one St. John's Road. We have tried multiple times to reach out, and we were unsuccessful. We can move to our next speaker from seventy-five Vernon Street.
All right.
Sarah, you have been unmuted.
So I am Sarah Renton. I live at seventy-five Vernon Street, down the street from the proposed site. And I'm here specifically to talk about the petition that is being signed, so right on the mark with that. As noted by the, a previous speaker, the builder and applicant approached our homes on Sunday afternoon. And I would just like to provide a couple of quotes that he said. He spoke to my stepmother, and he said, we're building the garden suite, and it's my property. I can do what I want. So I thought that was just a little odd, and I thought if that was the case, we wouldn't be here today. Then, when the petition was submitted, I thought it was also quite odd because the neighborhood has generally been not in support of this. So I was working from home yesterday, and I was like, I'll just walk over to these people's homes and see what they've been told. And as my neighbor mentioned earlier, they were told a variety of fabrications, such as four, at least four people were told, told that it was going to be a shed. One was told that it was going to be a garage-like structure with a small unit above. One, my long-term neighbor across the street that I know quite well, was told that it involved redistributing a floor plan to add storage space. One person, people heard that it was being built for the applicant's parents or that he himself planned to move in. And then, as we know, one person at least has submitted a formal letter redacting their support. So we have also been able to get a couple of initials from people who want to sort of redact their support as well because they felt completely misinformed and, but due to the last-minute nature of this whole thing that hasn't been submitted yet. But um should the committee request, I would be more than happy to support you. Um one person even told me that he just signed the thing to get this guy off his property and I do not blame him. Um so members of the committee, I strongly urge you to not consider this petition as a accurate representation of neighborhood support. It was built on confusion, fatigue and manipulation. Um between this shady petition and devious design that doesn't really change from the past um application, please refuse this application or at least defer to allow an investigation into this consultation and this petition. Please protect our neighborhood and please protect the due process and the integrity of building in this city. Thank you.
Thanks, panel. Panel, any questions? Thank you for the clarifications. Thank you. Uh we have another speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the final speaker from seventy-seven Vernon Street.
Afternoon, sir.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your name and address, please, sir.
It's Gary Fluxgold at seventy-seven Vernon Street. And I'd just like to thank all our neighbors for our heartfelt stuff they've said today. I'm going to be real quick and I'm going to read a prepared short, short statement. This morning I, or this afternoon, rather, I speak in opposition to the developer Maude City in their second attempt to gain permission to build a garden suite at the northern end of the property at fifty-two Vernon Street. Their first request was denied just a few months ago. This new proposal is essentially the same planned repackage and repackage. This is day-old bread sold as fresh baked. The current redevelopment at fifty-two Vernon Street already towers over the neighborhood with four approximately one thousand square foot apartments. As of now, it appears not all the suites are occupied. This reflects the advantage of having deep pockets. Maude City has more money and consequently more influence and power than me and my neighbors. Does having more money justify reshaping neighborhoods to corporate interests? Today, we are asking the committee to once again reject this, the essentially same proposed addition to fifty-two Vernon Street that you rejected just a few months ago. The developer here converted fifty-two Vernon Street from a very modest, reasonably priced family home into four rental apartments. At what point does carving up neighborhoods and selling family homes to private companies go too far? I know my neighbors, both renters and homeowners. Maude City and like businesses are purchasing the lowest price housing stock and aggressively building on every square inch, with little regard for the character or integrity of our communities. This is more Robert Moses than Jane Jacobs. We all want more housing options in Toronto. Laneway houses and secondary suites and family homes are valuable additions. But why are we allowing private companies and private equity to buy up our neighborhoods? The applicant here today now owns fifty-two Vernon, that now owns fifty-two Vernon states on its website that it plans to own a hundred buildings like this by twenty thirty. They have far deeper pockets and more influence than we do. Why are we facilitating the transfer of the city's most affordable homes into corporate hands whose primary motive is profit, even if it means using questionable tax tactics to achieve it? And I'm just going to sum up here. The situation reflects a larger trend in Toronto and other cities. Under the guise of progress and increased housing, private interests are buying the most affordable homes in neighborhoods, tearing them down and converting them into revenue generating properties for corporations. Is it truly the goal of the city of Toronto, the province of Ontario, to privatize entire neighborhoods? Does the modest family home with rental units to help pay mortgages no longer matter? I see this as giving away our neighborhoods to the highest bidder. The family home and neighborhoods are at risk. Finally, my neighbors and I have worked incredibly hard to make our modest homes welcoming and well-kept. We are active contributing members in our communities. Our homes are our nest eggs, the foundations for a dignified retirement. Achieving this has not been easy. We feel at risk by this onslaught. I urge you to vote against the second veiled attempt to build the garden suite at fifty-two Vernon Suite and to refuse the applicant's application once again. Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate the opportunity to be heard here.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Panel, any questions to the speaker? None? All right, we'll get the agent back. Okay, sir, welcome back. Uh we've heard a number of comments and um maybe you can also speak if you're able to, the issue around the petition.
I'm happy to address all the, the various issues that came up. Um maybe I'll start with the, what is perhaps the, the simplest. You saw a photograph um of lights because it was taken from the, from a neighbor on St. John's Street. Uh we had reached out to, uh reached out to my client. They confirmed that they will change those lights to different models that do not shine and, and do not uh have more light pollution in the area. So that's just an easy low-hanging fruit that I wanted to address, but we, we want to address that. That was a correspondence from Aaron McKay, I believe, is his name. Many of the concerns that were raised, sir, um and committee members, are procedural concerns. And I have to say that I do understand the frustration that neighbors would have at needing to return to the committee, raise their concerns on an application at the same subject site. I get it. And it's recent. It was just in August that, that this was refused. Um and that's just an inconvenience of the process. The reality is that this is a different application. This is an application that was designed to respond to the committees that were, I'm sorry, to respond to the comments that were raised by the committee um in, in August. And that's the nature of this process, unfortunately. If we want to have homes, if we want to intensify our neighborhoods, if we want to be building the missing middle, it is going to have to happen sometimes this way. Um and, and that, that, that is what it is. But I am sympathetic and understanding to those who are concerned about having to return here. Um I understand that for many, the experience of this application, maybe that nothing has changed. But I think that I, and I won't repeat it here, we went through all the changes. And while the variance numbers themselves may not appear to be significantly different, the design is certainly different and achieves what were the intended objectives of the comments. That is to reduce the impact, reduce the ma- massing and really implement some of those mitigation uh concerns. And also to address candid and valid concerns that the, that the uh committee raised about how the backyard would work, where the pathways were, where people would go. I think that there was at some point a discussion about people walking over grass as a somewhat unbelievable proposition. That is all laid out very clearly for you, for you now. Um and in some respects, what you didn't hear from those who appeared in opposition uh was their comments in respect of those differences. They were concerned about process. They were concerned about notice. They expressed valid frustration about needing to return, but they didn't comment directly about the specifics of this application such that they have helped you with the four tests, given what we've brought before you today. And that's unfortunate, but that is what it is in terms of, of, of where, um where their comments are. In respect of communication, sir, um this tribunal or this committee is, is, is actually regulated under the Statutory Powers and Procedures Act, which means you can receive hearsay and it's absolutely valid to receive hearsay. And it's all I have and it's all they have in terms of what the, the nature of that consultation was. I had a conversation with my client. They indicated to me, as I indicated to you, to you, that they had discussed the application with their neighbors, who those neighbors were, how many of them there were. I, I don't have the details of that, but there was some outreach. Um I can indicate that. Was the outreach as disappointing as it was reflected uh in the comments from Ms. Renton? I don't know. And at the end of the day, Ms. Renton is also relying on hearsay. It is not a feature of this committee's function or the four tests of the Planning Act that we meet a consultation threshold beyond this public hearing now. Could it be done differently? Certainly. Could the city impose rules and ask for things to be done differently? They should, perhaps they should, but that is, that is where we are. At the end of the day, we boil it all down to the four tests. And the four tests, as you were inter, as this committee interpreted them last August, were not met. With these changes, we respectfully submit that they are, that you can approve these, approve a new home for, be it a family, be it a couple, to enjoy the amenities of this neighborhood and be welcome, uh welcome residents in this area.
Thank you, sir. Uh you know. Oh, sorry, I just. Okay. Thank you, uh through you, Mr. Chair, uh to Mr. Flett. Um some, some questions, follow-up questions. In the planning presentation or justification report that was provided with um with this application, uh the author um talks about the refusal uh in August of twenty twenty-five. Um just curious, uh and again, it's probably rhetorical question, I probably know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Uh did the applicant not appeal it to the T-Lab? And if not, what were the reasons?
Uh I guess, because, so, so the decision that an applicant might have to rather, to appeal to the T-Lab or return to the committee with amended application is part cost, part timing. Uh and, 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 and there is a, a matter of strategic. If your intention is to build the missing middle, you have to choose the path you think is going to get you there. Um I, I am not in my client's head, so I don't know uh why they chose this path instead of the other, but this is why we're here.
Uh i- is it possibly also uh to engage in further um conversation with the residents?
It certainly, yes, it certainly does allow for that.
And, and is that what happened in terms of the improvements, the iteration that was, that was made to the application?
These changes responded directly to comments from the committee that were also comments that were raised in the correspondence in August.
Okay, um so in terms of uh some of the comments you heard today in opposition. Um and I know uh I, I've raised this with previous applications today, but I'm going to raise it again. There is a, there was an issue raised by Mr. Fenrick, who is the resident two forty-five St. John's Road, who talked about uh concern with proper notice uh for this application. Can you speak to that?
I'm not in a position to speak to that. The committee has its own rules. It has to make its, uh has to make its decisions within the Planning Act. If the committee is satisfied that proper notice went out, um then that, that is the committee's, that is the committee's position. Uh my other, I have raised the notice issue before as a lawyer and it's one of those cuts both ways situations that when you show up saying you didn't get notice, it indicates you got notice. Um but I leave, I, I, that, that is a, you know, that procedural concern is one for the committee to deserve, to determine.
But, but do you, in your opinion, do you believe that proper notice was given? In your opinion?
In my opinion, the, the opposition and the opportunity for people to respond, respond by deadline and respond past a deadline would suggest to me that there was adequate notice.
All right, thank you. Um so I, I apologize if this sounds like you're at T-Lab, or I was previously, but um can we agree on a, on a, on a number of, of, of things? First of all, uh we live in a, uh in a capitalist society, so uh private land ownership and, and profits from uh improving uh uh land that is owned privately is not the um uh is not part of, of what we consider at the, at, at a committee like this.
Correct, sir. If, uh that, that is well established in, in the planning jurisprudence in Ontario that we do not take the economics of a project into account. It could, of course, cut both ways, right? A developer would be able to say, I need to make certain profits, vice versa.
And can we also agree that, that courts have, have determined that variance is a right and, and not, uh variance is, is not a right, but a privilege?
Um it, that is the wording that we use, was, was used in DeGaspuris. Um I think that if you were to rec, if you were to suggest that every tribunal decision where there's tribunal discretion is a privilege, may be an overstep that I would be uncomfortable with. But uh if you framed it that way, I would uh, I would softly say yes with that.
Generally speaking.
Generally speaking, yes.
All right, and, and uh you, you raise um the issue of hearsay. Uh and while I agree with you that, that the SPPA allows hearsay, uh the reality is that uh that then comes down to uh a question of uh what weight you give to that.
Correct, sir.
Because we don't have those individuals in front of us to cross-examine them or ask them questions.
At the end of the day, you're always weighing the evidence you hear.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Okay, yep.
Yes, I actually uh assume that I'm obliged to make some comments or question to you.
Hold on here a second. I thought I saw a notice that this was going to happen today.
I, I like to know. Oh, is this?
I think all our phones will do that.
They're going to go off, so just, just, everybody turn your phone off.
Like even if it is silenced, it still goes through.
Yeah. All right, you can go. Go ahead.
Uh you have mentioned that uh this time the application have made revisions directly in response to the uh comments that are made by the previous hearing. And I, I, that is the question I like to ask because I was sitting on that previous uh application. That um I, can you actually uh specify those? Uh because when I look at, compare the two ev- evocations, um the difference uh way more. So secondly, we, I do not have the defer uh drawings that will uh will support what you just said. You said that you have reduced the massing of the garden suite or something. I do not, we do not have the, the, those drawings here, the previous ones. So can you, just by explaining what you have done to actually, you, you claim that is directly in response to our comment last time?
Right, okay. So I, so as I understand, you'd like to know a, a little bit around what, what was changed from before. Um certainly, there's been a compression of the garden suite, so it, it is now a, a broad, broad, brought in in terms of the length of the, of the, of the lot from the back. Um and of, and, and it's our submission uh that uh the, one of the significant changes is the introduction of the angular planes uh on all sides of the garden suites, so that you have that reduction. And even I, I noticed that when we look at the sign affidavit picture, and I'm not saying we have to bring it up, but you see the impact that, that dormers and angular planes have on reducing the impression of massing. And in this case, my submission is that this is a significant change and will, will truly change the way that the garden suite, if approved, will be experienced by, uh by the neighbors.
That's refresh me because I don't have the, 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 the previous drawings. So in the, in, in, in the old, uh the previous drawings, you have all these like, uh you do not have the angular pane, you mean?
It didn't have all the angular planes, no.
Okay. And, and, and in fact, I mean, variance two is actually worse than last time. It's not better. But this way is a small um difference. It's not what I want to actually pay attention to. But when it come to my explanation why last, what we felt uh last, in the last hearing, I think um I would like to point out to the current panels that, that some context why we, we make those, these decisions later when we come to a.
Okay, good. That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if, given that this is a question-answer uh section. Mr. Man, Mr. Chair, sorry, I was, because I was, actually had the YouTube video in my mind of, of when, when, when Madam, Madam Chair was, was chairing. Um if you do have a concern about context, I, I, I think that I might be entitled to hear it in a question-and-answer period, subject to the chairs.
Subject, yeah.
Uh if you want to share the context of what you perceive as being the panel's view on this one, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's very brief, actually. Uh the, the context is that the uh, the objection from uh number fifty-two, that uh a few photographs have been presented. What we felt that is not uh specifically about the small variances from the, uh from what permits is the cumulative impact. If you look at the page, uh the, the, yes, all this, and especially the top photograph, that's when we, when the panel started to uh uh make decision. Uh and uh the, the other one, the first one, the first uh picture, um yes, that this one. We felt that uh they are really build the four plus. Uh it is the combinations of the stairs and also the superstructure of the stair, which is going up to all, uh to the top floor. And the superstructure is way on the property line. If you look at this picture, they already got a very blank wall coming up quite high. And plus the superstructure of the exterior stairs, which is not in terms, if you do not see the context, it's not part of the variation, uh variances, right? So we felt that at that point, since you do not have the distance between the uh, the two structure, yeah, and then you, you, you still allow, I mean, we still would accept a garden suite at that point, but because of cumulative uh impact, we thought that there's a, maybe we still listen to the community. We still will, will care about the impact that it creates. It's not that we, we, we think these variances are, are, are not reasonable, but we thought that maybe with the um, with the uh, the garden. but we thought that maybe with the, with the garden suite, it can mitigate the impact if it stay with the height.
I'm gonna.
That's the context.
I'm just gonna allow the agent to respond to that.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for expressing that part of the committee's rationale. The stairs, as we discussed in the last application that I represented, are a function of the fire code and that no variances are required for the stairs themselves. I understand that we can't pretend they're not there, but that is just a function of the way the building has to work to be safe and for there to be adequate space. And so that is where we're stuck there. What I would indicate is that there is still adequate space for all of the stormwater management that we discussed and bicycles, and that this is an area with remarkable opportunities for outdoor amenity space.
Okay, you have any more questions?
Yeah, yeah, that's, he answered it, but also that's why we were thinking that since the four-plex already permitted.
So we can have that discussion in committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members.
All right, that concludes presentations. Let's take this into committee.
Yeah, at that time, it was not, we did not know, they come about with, like, they do, they have done some improvement in terms of increasing more angular plane. I think that's the only thing that I see as some effort to reduce the impact. And that's an improvement, whether this panel think that is enough, I do not know. But the logic is that they have achieved the main part with the four-plex, and they still can have a garden suite. We felt that the garden suite can be smaller. That's as simple as that, yeah.
I wanna add a little bit even further context. I was actually on the panel that approved the original multiplex. And that was fairly early on in the permissions that were granted for multiplexes, and it was a very controversial application, which the panel ultimately approved. But there was significant amount of opposition back then from probably many of the same neighbors. I, given that, had that application come forward as a combination application with both the multiplex and the garden suite combined, I can't say, but I suspect there, it might have been a different outcome. And that's kind of where my head is on this one, is that this is mid-block. It's not close to an end. It is very much right in the middle of the street. As a consequence, it has fairly significant impacts on adjoining properties and rear properties. It's unfair to say that those neighbors have, you know, kind of paid their dues by virtue of accepting this into their community. And some additional density on this site may be beyond what I think the property owners and the neighbors should be asked to bear. I, like Jim, I see the photo that I think it was number 50 sent in from the rear, and it is a dramatic impact on that property. And I can understand, the picture's worth a thousand words. I can understand, looking at that visual, the kind of impact that this property and others are already bearing. And I think that the incremental addition of another two-story dwelling on top of that and, you know, the superstructure that's supporting the staircase, well, understand its code, but it is a visual impact regardless, and you have people walking up and down that. That is an imposition on neighbors. Not every lot is suitable for the combination of a multiplex and a garden suite. Some are, some are better than others. My own view is that this one is not suitable for the additional density of a garden suite. So I, personally, I won't be able to support this one for those reasons. Dino?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I agree with your comments. You've made some of the points I was gonna raise, but I'll reiterate briefly. So what concerns me is this looks like incremental planning to me. As you mentioned, this applicant was before the committee in August of 2024 for a four-plex, which the city council through the official plan and amendments supports. And then came forward a year later with a proposal for the garden suite. That was refused. It behooves me to understand, you know, maybe economics, whatever the reason is, why the original application was not.
Development charges.
Yeah.
That's basically what it comes down to.
Yeah. So you're correct, and I agree with you that the, you know, the final reports I went before council on garden suites and multiplexes talks about not every property being able to accommodate both. And in this particular instance, I think the massing of the proposed garden suite is a little too much for me in terms of the variances being requested. Now, if, you know, and this is a function of the lot size. And it's narrow and it's long, but it's difficult to fit both of these structures onto this lot without variances. If, for example, the garden suite were set back from the main house 7.5 meters, then the bylaw says it could be 6.3 meters in height. It is not. That's a function, I think, of the size of the multiplex. So I think, you know, beyond four meters in height is beyond what I can support. So I would have to agree with you that I have difficulties with supporting this.
Okay, Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I don't have much further to add. I agree with your comments. And I think it comes down to, you can't just look at these variances in isolation, right? It's on a lot that already has a very large building, and I think they have to be looked at cumulatively. And it gets to a question of desirability, I think, rather than whether they're minor or not. I think that's the key for me, that I think it's, what's being proposed is not desirable for the broader neighborhood, but also for the people who will be living in this multiplex, right? That's four families. And having either a much smaller garden suite in the backyard or a usable backyard, I think, would benefit them extremely as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. I'll look to someone to move a motion.
Well, I can make a motion to refuse this application.
Okay, motion by Ms. Chan.
As amended.
Oh, as amended, yes.
Ms. Chan to refuse amended application, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? The application is unanimously refused. Thank you all for coming down.
Oh, I need to go.
Need a break? Okay. How many more have we got in the morning session?
Five more. I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah, take a short break. Can they do a five-minute? Yeah, five-minute break?
Five minutes? Okay. Please turn off your videos, microphones, mute the.
Okay, are we ready? Yeah, we resume with item number 1354 Bond Road. This is an application to permit a residential use below a non-residential use within the existing two-story mixed-use building by converting the existing vacant basement into a two-bedroom residential dwelling unit. The ground floor commercial use will be maintained, and there will be a total of two residential dwelling units within the building on the lot. Committee has before to copy plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, five photographs of the subject property, and a covering letter from the agent. Do we have the agent online?
Through Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no registered speaker for this item.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Sabah?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I wasn't able to unmute myself. Sabah QBS Architects. I am the agent applicant for this application.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Hang on a second. Panel, fairly straightforward. Anyone need a presentation? Ma'am, we don't need a presentation today. We've read the application. We're familiar with the material. It seems fairly straightforward. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. We're in committee. Straightforward, I think. Peter, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, this is straightforward, and I think it's a positive thing, adding another rental unit into a Main Street situation. And this is actually a fair-sized unit as well. And just this one variance being requested is minor, so I move approval without condition.
Right. Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, seconded by Ms. Chan. All in favor is approved. Okay, move on to item number 14. 119 Merton Street, Unit 417. This is an application to alter the existing 12-story apartment building by enclosing a double-height opening within Unit 417 for a habitable space. Committee has before to copy plan and survey, site plan, floor plans and elevation, six photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, previous decision number affecting the subject property, presentation materials from the agent, a letter from the property manager of the condo corporation, and site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the property. Do we have the agent?
Through Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no speakers for this item.
Okay, thank you. Alexei?
Good afternoon, the committee. My name is Alexis Itankun. I'm the applicant on behalf of the homeowners presenting today.
Okay, sir, hang on a second. I don't know if we need a presentation. You're basically looking to enclose a two-story balcony, and you've got your condo board's approval?
Yes, it's inside the unit, so we have open space between main level and second level. And we have the presentation material, just one pager.
Sure, why don't you then just take the panel through that then?
It's, as you can see, this is an existing condo building, and this is the unit from inside. And you can see the proposed enclosure of the open space. We're adding 6.2 meters of the usable area on the second floor to expand the existing main bedroom.
Okay. Is this the first time that's been done, or is there precedent in this building?
This is, I believe, the third time it's done in this building. The previous application that we tracked, that's what existing residential growth floor area was increased already from the original application back from late 90s. And we are kind of adding to that one.
Okay. Panel, any questions? No. All right, thank you very much, sir. Let's take it into committee. Yeah, or sorry, Dino, go ahead. Motion to approve? Yeah, okay. Motion by Mr. Lombardi to approve, seconded by Ms. Chan. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, the committee.
Item number 15 is 45 Kings Park Boulevard. This is an application to. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front second-story addition above the existing covered front porch. Committee has before to copy the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of the subject property, tree protection plan and presentation materials from the agent. We have three form letters and support from 4344 Kings Park Boulevard and 148 Woodycrest.
Through Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and no registered speaker for this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. A little louder, please, sir.
I might need to adjust my microphone settings if you can't hear me clearly, so just let me know.
Okay.
Is that better?
That is better, thank you, name and address, please, sir.
Nick Allen from Replacement Design, address is 160 The Westway, Unit 16A at Tobico, Ontario. And I'm here today speaking on behalf of the owners.
Great, thank you, sir, we may be on a bit of a roll here. I'm going to ask the panel, does anyone need a presentation on this one? Looks fairly straightforward, sir. We've read your application, we're familiar with the material, we don't need a presentation today. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No, I'm fine to move forward, I'll just quickly highlight the letters of support, all from properties very close to the subject property, two of them are adjacent.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. All right. We're in committee, panel? Peter?
Sure, thanks. Yeah, this is a very minor application, I I do think that it's supportable partly because of the context. The the garage, the flanking garage being beside it on the one side, which comes out closer to the road. I think that lessens any kind of visual impact and the fact that it's at the end of end of a strip of very similar homes. So I I think this is a good application, and I move approval without condition.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reed to approve, seconded by Ms. Chan, all in favor. You have your approval, sir, thank you. Item number 16 is 34 Darrell Ave. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition. And committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, covering letter from the agent, an arborist report and materials, comparable materials from the agent. We have a staff report from Metrolinks and from Urban Forestry. There are two form letters and support from 32 and 36 Darrell Avenue.
Through Mr. Chair, we have the agent here in person and no registered speaker for this item.
Ah, welcome, sir. Name and address, please. Oh, did we got to get the microphone?
Sorry about that, hello, Joe Marmanzano, structural engineer with K H Davis Engineering, 1468 Danforth Avenue. I'm representing my clients 34 Darrell as their structural engineer and agent.
Okay, you're only going for FSI?
We're just going for FSI, yeah.
So panel, does anyone need a presentation on this one? Sir, we really appreciate you coming down, but we don't really need a presentation. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel?
I think I just noticed that there was a note from Metrolinks, and I'd like to note that we did actually do a permit for this right in August, and then we added our COA. We were approved by Metrolinks at that point. The work that we're doing here is light, the the worst that we would have to do is the underpinning that was we were already approved for. And everything is wood constructed, so we don't think we're going to have an issue once we apply for approvals from Metrolinks during permitting.
Okay, that's great, thank you for that, very helpful. All right, any questions of the speaker? Dino?
Chair, I'm reading your arborist report, obviously you'll be incorporating tree protection measures as required or as recommended by.
Yes, we have to as as part of the underpinning, the underpinning has not even conducted yet, but that is required as per the tree protection plan.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. No further questions, let's take this into committee. Jim? Right, and they captured the Metrolink stuff, that seems like it's under control, so that's great. Motion by Ms. Chan to approve, seconded by Mr. Lombardi, all in favor. You have your approval, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, last item for this morning's session is 12 McMaster Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a rear third-story addition above dormer above the two-story addition, and a rear ground floor deck with stairs. Committee has before it, copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, seven photographs of trees on the subject property, email correspondence from the agent, 3D renderings from the agent, and a copy of the survey for 10 McMaster Avenue next door. We have four, four, excuse me, four form letters and support from 179, 191 Cottingham and 10 and 14 McMaster Avenue.
Through Mr. Chair, we have the agent online and one registered speaker in support.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe we can ask the agent, but I believe the support is affiliated with the owners.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, good afternoon, sir. No, that doesn't sound good.
Marco, you have been unmuted?
Is that one of our computers?
Maybe we'll try and call.
Ah. Okay, Marco, are you there?
Oh, it's him. Through you, Mr. Chair, we're going to try calling Marco.
Marco, you have been unmuted?
Yes, I can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, full name and address, please.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair, my name is Marco Bonati, 92370 Cambridge Avenue, Toronto, and I'm the agent of the owner of 1 McMaster.
Okay, Marco, you have Daisy May back? Sir, have you got more than one device open?
Yeah, I turned it off.
Okay, that's good. Is Ms. Morris with you, is she associated with the owner?
She is the owner of the property.
All right, so we're just going to assume that she is supportive of the application.
She, I would, I would assume so, yeah.
Again, sir, you're you're not, your your variances are really quite minor. I panels think we need a presentation? Sir, we we don't need a presentation today, read your application, we're familiar with the material. I would say to you that I think personally really appreciate the renderings, they make a considerable difference and make it really easy for the panel to understand exactly what you're proposing, so thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
We don't need a presentation, is there anything you want to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No.
Nope, okay. All right, any questions, panel? Then, all right, let's go into committee, who wants to take this one on? Peter?
Yeah, I I agree, I think the the application package was was good and and well-rounded. There's only two variances, the width of the dormer, I can see no impact of of permitting that. It's it's actually a bit of an odd bylaw, I find. But the I think, and the length, the impact of the length is mitigated, I think, because this is quite a wide lot, and there are there are meaningful setbacks on on both sides, meaningful setbacks on both sides. So I think the the impact of approving these variances is very minor. I think this meets the four tests, so I'll move approval without condition.
Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, I have a seconder, Ms. Mr. Lombardi, all in favor. You have your approval, thank you very much. And that concludes the morning session, Sabrina, we back at 2:30?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, we'll be back at 2:30.
All right.